Selectmen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess the first item we're going to take up is the swearing in of our new Deputy Chief. As you know, Deputy Exaros retired effective, I believe it was Sunday, and yet here he is again. To welcome his replacement, Lieutenant Lennon, who very shortly will be our new Deputy Chief, Lennon. Chief?
Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. In this job, there's a lot of times we don't have good news for you, but tonight is good news. We're here to swear in Deputy Chief Kevin Lennon, and it's been a pleasure working with Kevin for his entire career and to watch the growth of what he is today, and it's even better to look forward to the future that he is ably confident in producing wonderful work for us. Give you a little bio on Deputy Chief Lennon. Deputy Chief Kevin Lennon began his law enforcement career as a patrolman with the Tisbury Police Department in 1991. In August of 1993, he accepted the position of patrolman with the Yarmouth Police Department. Deputy Chief Lennon was promoted to the rank of sergeant in January of 2001 and to the rank of lieutenant in September of 2008. Deputy Chief Lennon has an Associate's Degree in Law Enforcement from Cape Cod Community College, a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Western New England College, and a Master's Degree in Public Administration from Anna Maria College. He is also an FBI National Academy graduate. He graduated in 2008 in class number 233, which is the high-water mark for a law enforcement Deputy Chief Lennon has held positions as Detective Sergeant, Detective Lieutenant, Administrative Lieutenant, and Patrol Lieutenant. Deputy Chief Lennon is a Level Four instructor with the Municipal Police Training Committee and has assisted with the development of training programs for police gatherings across the street. Deputy Chief Lennon has participated in the training of police officers across the Commonwealth and has trained over 4,000 police officers. Deputy Chief Lennon is a well-rounded individual with a passion for serving the community. He is the immediate past president of the Yarmouth Rotary Club and currently serves as President of the Yarmouth Rotary Foundation. Deputy Chief Lennon served on the Yarmouth Food Pantry Board of Directors for a term of three years, currently serves an advisory committee to the Children's College, the Bunsen County Child Advocacy Center. Deputy Chief Lennon will be pinned by his wife, Sandra. So, we have with me the badge that he will be pinned with. This has been passed down by Deputy Chief Exaros. He may not be aware, we took it out of his locker today. We thank you for that. Phil Gardett is going to do the swearing in.
I can see you. Kevin, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kevin Lennon...
I, Kevin Lennon.
...do solemnly swear and affirm...
Solemnly swear and affirm.
...that I will faithfully and impartially perform...
That I will faithfully and impartially perform...
...all the duties incumbent upon me...
All the duties incumbent upon me.
...as Deputy Police Chief for the Town of Yarmouth.
As Deputy Police Chief for the Town of Yarmouth.
...according to the bylaws of the town...
According to the bylaws of the town.
...Massachusetts general laws...
Massachusetts general laws.
...and the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. (laughter) Really, for the board meeting, Kevin, you guys say thanks to everybody for coming out tonight. This means a lot to me. Thank you for your confidence, the board, and Dan, thank you very much, and Chief, thank you for your confidence, and Deputy, for everything you've done for me over my career. Again, thank you for coming out. This is truly overwhelming, so that's all I got. Thank you very much.
All right. Awesome.
Kevin's just...
Oh, nice. Nice to meet you.
My husband like...
It's not over. You could stay.
Yeah, that's right.
(inaudible).
Good to see you.
You too.
Get out of here fast.
See, really.
Have a good night.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you, too.
(inaudible).
You going all week?
(inaudible).
Vita? You shut that door.
I just wanted to bring you up to date on what Jeff Colby was able to give me, the figures of having to do with the solar panels on this building. If I, I just want to go back to the beginning when a proponent back in 2008 was pushing this project mercilessly, apparently, and swore up and down that the $50,000 to be spent on those panels would be recouped in a two-year period, and after that, everything was going to be gravy. Well, Jeff tells me that just now, 11 years later, they're finally have reached more or less that point, and something that he said, which hadn't occurred to me, I don't know why not, but a certain amount of wear and tear sets in, and the amount of energy that is produced by that starts going down. It's not always at the same level as it is in the beginning and up to maybe, I think he said at about this point, if I'm not mistaken, right? And that the diminishing returns will be setting in. So, the reason I'm saying this at all is that a couple of meetings ago, there was somebody here, again, pushing something with solar panels, I think. Those people tend to talk very fast, and I just wonder sometimes if this board catches everything that's going on so that we don't make commitments for the town, for the taxpayers, without fully understanding what those people are really pushing. I hope that doesn't happen, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Vita. Anyone else? Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Tom McEnroe, Precinct 3, right here, the People's Building. I rise tonight to make an announcement about our Channel 18. As some of you may be aware, over the last several years, it's been very poor quality, and we had some issues, and if anybody can see it now, it's pretty clear, and from my understanding, at home, you can actually hear it.
So, with that, I would like to, working in the Media Department, under my supervisor, Rich, which is directed by Dan, we'd like to thank you for your patience. We encourage you to keep on viewing the channel. Your program will, the programming will be accelerated, so now we can actually enjoy what we're watching. So, and then one other comment is, the committee handbook is on the agenda tonight, and I wasn't too sure about an edit for some of the chairman of the committees. I think term limits are very important. We have terms for three years, and I don't believe that a chairman should be more than four terms. So, with that, I'd like to engage you in discussion. Good evening. Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening. Christine Marzagliano, we're Precinct 7. Following the CPA presentation two sessions ago, I received a lot of feedback from, through, with emails, through a lot of people that are involved. I'd just like to read you a few of the comments. People want to know, what are the sources of the revenues to fund sewers and how much revenue will be generated by each source? What is the yearly cost of the sewers? What grants are available? What fees ought to be charged? And can the public participate in the process of determining how sewer funding will be generated? What committee or person should they contact? Now, I did talk to Rich before the meeting tonight, and he said he will send me the chart of the anticipated. Now, I understand that some of the revenues are ranges, but at least we can see, and I think you need to be a little more transparent with the public and publish the information a little more. It just doesn't seem to be getting out to the public. So, let's work together so that by the time we get to town meeting, that everybody will vote for this, so that we will be voting for clean water along Route 28, as well as for those issues of protecting the water and the other 80 percent of the town, and I thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next item is the Golf Enterprise Committee.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Ted Dekel. I'm the chairperson of the Golf Enterprise Committee. I'd just like to read a brief opening statement. I've heard that said so many times lately, I just felt the need to say it. The Yarmouth Golf Enterprise Committee appreciates the time and effort that National Golf, that National Golf Consulting has spent working with the Town of Yarmouth and Yarmouth Golf Operations. For the most part, we agree with and approve of the recommendations put forth by National Golf. As stated in the National Golf presentation, Yarmouth Golf is not a private, self-sustaining operation, but a function of town recreation. As such, it provides entertainment and exercise for taxpayers and visitors, commercial support for local restaurants, stores, and lodgings, as well as to increase desirable real estate values in Yarmouth, to make Yarmouth an attractive place for people to choose to make their homes. The National Golf report states that although other municipalities on the Cape also run their golf operations from an enterprise fund, those operations contribute certain capital funding to their golf operations. It's also the opinion of Golf Enterprise Committee that this Board of Selectmen needs to answer the question as to what the appropriate role of golf for the Town of Yarmouth should be. Assuming the Board of Selectmen does support a vision of municipal golf, which is competitive with other municipal golf enterprises on Cape Cod, then the Yarmouth Golf Enterprise Committee recommends and approves the following. We have a slide presentation.
Rich, you have access to that presentation?
Yes.
You got a, you got a flash drive? All right, just send it to Rich right now, we can pull it up. Of course not. Not here.
While we're waiting, can I jump back to an announcement that didn't get made, real quick?
Sure.
There are several people here this evening. I'm not a resident of Yarmouth, but I work at St. David's Episcopal Church, and several people are here to support the community preservation funds that we know are possibly on the chopping block and wanted to reaffirm that this is one of the few places that we get state funding for dollars on the dime, and when we put money in, we end up getting more than eight times the amount back in renovation monies that are really important for our tourist economy, so we would encourage the Selectmen to think twice about chopping the CPC connection by half for next year. Thanks.
Can I ask something about the CPC? Can I ask? Has the state finally replenished that till so that the reimbursement will be back to somewhere where it used to be, rather than that 10 percent or whatever that it was this year? Does that...
I don't know what the latest status is. There's a supplemental budget that hasn't passed yet, so...
Oh. So...
I think there are some provisions in that budget for that, but I think that's been hung up in the legislature, and it remains to be seen whether it's going to pass.
So, a very iffy thing, right? Okay.
At the moment, yeah.
This is happening. They have a presentation with slides. No slides.
Well, rather than just sit here, I...
Go ahead.
I, you know, I have, I have the copy of the slides here, so...
We could always, if they get them, go and back up over some of them.
Right, we can always back up to it.
Sure.
One of the things that, the first thing on our list would, would be that we need to prepare, the Board of Selectmen needs to see that we prepare for a new point-of-sale system and for food and beverage services, you know, RFPs for those. And I understand that preparations have already been made to get those RFPs out probably before the end of the year. The need for a new point-of-sale system, besides the obvious things of improving cash flow and accountability, and to increase revenue by enabling more and effective dynamic pricing, we also need to improve marketing to new and repeat customers, and a modern-day point-of-sale system would give us the ability to do that. We could also create a better social media presence through the use of the more up-to-date point-of-sale system, and it would also enhance our website, give us the ability to get information out there to the public so they could see what we're about and what's going on here. And it would also help us to manage tee-time availability, which is a prime source of revenue when it comes to, to a golf course. We also need to take care of the issue of the food and beverage services for Bayberry Hills and Bass River. As recommended by the National Golf Foundation, their recommendation was that rather than continue to take care of that in-house, that, you know, we, you know, find concessioners to, to take it over. Food and beverage is very necessary for a successful golf experience. When, when you have golfers come into your course, you want them to have an overall experience that they're going to remember and come back to your course, and providing them with the food and beverage expectations that they're looking for is a big part of creating repeat Currently, there are returns on food and beverage are limited, partly because, let's face it, people who run golf courses are not food service experts, and it's a difficult business, and there are a lot of limitations placed on, on the current management because of the way things are set up financially, financially as a municipality, in terms of your ability to purchase goods and things like that, that put limitations on your ability to be successful. It's also a very competitive market on Cape Cod when it comes to food and beverage, and if you can't, if you're not providing a competitive, you know, something competitive, then you're not going to get the bang for your buck that you'd like to be able to get. So, we definitely agree with National Golf that the way to go is to outsource the food and beverage. The one problem with that right now is that we're kind of limited to the existing infrastructure. The Bass River would seem to be your primary food and service point because of its location, but with issues relating to the upcoming wastewater plan, there are time considerations here. If you're going to have a contract with a provider, trying to provide them with a timeline would be important, and since Bass River is to be the site of the recharge field for the wastewater plant, the wastewater program, and is going to undergo a serious renovate, you know, it's going to have to be torn apart and rebuilt during that time, we're not going to be playing golf there. And so, you know, spending money to improve the cap, you know, the facilities to enhance the ability of a food service vendor to come in becomes a kind of a moot point until we can understand what's going on with that. That also affects some of our other planning. Right now, the golf operations is trying to plan on a contract for cart leasing, and the cart leasing, you know, how long the lease is going to be?
You're good. Oh. Okay. Which button do I click?
I'll hit the button for you, Ken.
Okay. The problem with, with cart leasing is that you'd probably want to have a five-year contract, and if we, if we're not sure that we're going to be able to do that, if you had a five-year contract and two years from now, Bass River has to close down, and we have a five-year contract on the carts, we have a problem. And the carts would have to, the carts would have to be taken away, they couldn't be stored there anymore. So, the ability to plan is, has been severely restricted by the uncertainty proposed by the, by wastewater.
Next one.
All right. We also feel that there's a need to develop a plan for the future of golf in Yarmouth. Right now, the apparent current goals for golf, and the way, the way it has seemed to work in the past, is that golf should be totally self-sustaining, and that members' fees should be reasonable, and the daily fee player's support should make that possible. And that's basically the model that golf has worked under as long as I've been here, and I started playing here in 2002. But there are considerations for, for new goals for golf. A lot of that has to do with, you know, what's the value of golf to the town, to the economy and to its residents? Changes in the golf environment since the mid-1980s. The last big infrastructure issue about golf was when Bayberry was built, and when the idea that golf should be totally self-sustaining probably became really well-established. But golf has changed since then. The, the market for golf, who plays golf, how much golf is played, how you attract people to your course, a lot of things have changed. We also believe, as did the National Golf Foundation, that golf should continue with the goal of self-sustainability for its regular operations, definitely. There's no reason to think that we can't continue to cover our expenses for our regular operations continuing into the future. But to avoid debt, we think that it, that golf should be allowed to propose at town meeting that capital improvements and major costs be included in the town budget, when, when those things are necessary, not necessarily on a regular basis, but when, when something like that is necessary. One of the problems that the National Golf pointed out was that continued assumption of debt by golf operations is a major source of some of its issues. We also feel it's necessary to define the place of golf in the town chain of command. There have been some issues about that in the recent past, and I kind of understand that perhaps this has been pretty much taken care of already, but it still needs to be something that is, is established in, for the future, to clearly define who, who the Director of Golf reports to. That makes it easy for the Director of Golf. It also makes it easier for us so that we can interact with the Director of Golf and with the golfers, and it will help to delineate the decision-making authority within golf operations. They won't, you know, nobody likes to think that they're going to have somebody looking over their shoulder telling them to do something when they've already made plans to do something We also think that there were some suggested fair revenue enhancements that the National Golf Foundation suggested. One was a minimum 2.5 percent increase per year to fees to meet expected costs of living increases. They actually suggested 5 percent a year, but as was suggested at the previous meeting and as we felt in our debate, that an increase, a small increase every year is less onerous. Besides the fact that you've got a little bit of math in your favor, 2.5 percent a year, it actually comes out to a little bit more than 5 percent every other year. Compounding interest over time, probably make a little bit of extra money that way. We also felt that there, there are suggestions about cart fees. They wanted to raise cart fees by 3 percent, $3, I shouldn't say 3 percent. We currently have the lowest cart fees for members on the Cape. That probably is because of our 5 percent increase a year limitation over the length of the enterprise fund the last 14 years or so, so that our member cart fees have not grown as fast or have been, not been able to grow as fast in reaction to changes in the market and change, and things like that. So, we expect that what we'd like, what we should do is, during the upcoming 2020 season, we'll take a look at that, do some evaluation of it. we'll take a look at that, do some evaluation of it and present in the fall 2020 town meeting a plan to increase the base price by as much as $2 or $3 if we find that that's limited, that that's warranted. And we probably think that it is, but we want to make sure we study it first because it's a cost to people. And one of the things they also discussed was the idea of doing away with the requirement of carts at Bayberry during the week. So we're also going to evaluate that from Monday, Monday to Thursday to see whether, what the impact of that might be. Of course, one of the things is if we eliminate the requirement to take carts from Monday to Thursday at Bayberry, you're also hitting yourself in the pocketbook. So how much of an impact is that going to have? Before we go and do it, we'd like to try and get a handle on what the impact of that might be. And then it could have other effects. It gets complicated. You start putting more people out walking. Does that slow the course down? There are a lot of things to think about before you go and do something like that. So we feel that an evaluation should be made before, you know, before we pull the, you know, pull the string. A similar review will be made to consider raising the base price of the new links membership. We priced that at $300 to start with and got close to 60 people who are interested in it, but now we can only raise it by 5% a year. And we feel that it may be a little bit undervalued. And if that's the case, if we needed to raise it more than 5%, we would have to present that at town meeting as well. And this is kind of a big point here because $20,000 a week in possible revenue is lost to prime-time league play, okay, each week. The Board of Selectmen, we feel, should support changes made to either the times or the movement of some of those leagues to the links, which was also something the National Golf Foundation When you sit down and you add up the number of tee times at four person, four players per tee time at the average cost per tee time, and there are leagues every day of the week except Friday and Saturday, and there are leagues on Sunday, Sunday morning, it comes out to $20,000 a week. And those are at prime time. And there are about 230 members who play in leagues in one way or the other. Trying to move those times to try and make available the prime time is a big issue. And it's not something that would be done without consultation with leagues themselves. No, no one is going to just say, sorry, this is, you know, there will, there'll be some conversation and understanding reached, but, you know, golfers are going to respond. And if we, if golf operations can feel that they have the support of the Board of Selectmen, if they feel the need to do something like that, it'll make it a lot easier. We also, we had some, so one of the things we had concerns with was the National Golf Foundation's staffing plan. They pretty much had what looked to us like a boilerplate staffing plan that would work fine if we were just creating a golf course from scratch. And that's, this is what we wanted to have as a plan. But it kind of ignored the current structure that we have here that in fact really is working. And the recent turnaround in our financial trends is a good example of why it's working and how it's working. There's been improved communication with members. The development of the GEC's role as an advisory body has changed. There was a time when someone like me would not ever be sitting here. I can't say that when I took the job as a member of the committee, I thought this is where I was going to end up. It's also heavy on the number of personnel. It seems to have more people in it than you really need. And of course, that, those are costs. That adds to salary and benefits. And there's a lack of emphasis on golf operations for the director position. Right now, we have a situation where our acting director also has the skills as a superintendent. And so he understands both sides of what goes on in golf. There's the business side, but there's also the taking care of the golf course, and that's where the major costs for the golf course are, is taking care, you know, keeping that, is doing the upkeep. The current Yarmouth plan combines management and superintendent responsibilities, and it's a formula that's working at other Cape courses. This wouldn't be something new. There are a couple of other of our municipal neighbors whose superintendent, whose directors of golf are also superintendents. The greenkeeping and upkeep are the major sources of costs, and that's where you, that's where you're going to, that's where you're saving. Not only do you save money, but when you have the right, when you present the good product, you make more money. A marketing and sales vision is currently unfulfilled, you know, if that's needed. And it could be possibly a part-time position or it could be something that's outsourced. And the support staff morale after tumultuous year of, is something that we think really should be considered. The people who work for golf, golf from top to bottom have, you know, have been through a lot of ups and downs and uncertainty over the last year or so. And one major item not mentioned, whoops. And I did touch on this a bit before, is the whole problem of how wastewater impacts Bass River. They did make suggestions for major improvements to Bass River, something in the order of about $1.6 million because of drainage issues. Greens that were built in the 1920s or '30s that are not up to current standards. The players who are out there today think they look great, but their structure is not that which is conducive to continued good health. A lot of the tees are too small. They're not, they're not long enough. They're not wide enough. Some of them are poorly placed to make interference with other golfers, you know, a condition that has to be considered as well. But how can you think about doing anything like that when you don't know what's going to happen to the golf? The golf course may be totally taken apart and rebuilt in an entirely new way. So that's something that though they mentioned it, we really don't feel we can do anything about it until we have some idea of where we're going in the future. And, you know, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and, try and
Anybody want to have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Thanks, Ted. Appreciate the recommendations. The question about the wastewater, I'm wondering if the Enterprise Committee had any thoughts on the best way to approach the staffing question? What do you do with the people that would be working? How would you approach things if we kept, you know, nine holes open for one year and then nine holes another year? You know, I wondered if the, if the group had talked about that.
Well, I spoke with Scott about that this morning. And we did have a meeting with the architect and with the wastewater consultant back in August, I think it was. And the idea of trying to do that, you might get away with it for one year for keeping nine holes open, but in the second year, the way things are likely to go, we don't see how you could do that two years in a row.
You mean from the standpoint of membership?
Well, in terms of keeping the course open for, you know, that it, probably in reality and the National Golf Foundation, though they didn't say anything in their plan, they did mention to us that they think the best way to do would be to just shut it down completely.
Get it done, yeah.
Get it done. That in all likelihood, you might end up the second year really only being able to use five holes instead of nine because of the way the construction might be done. And who wants to play golf on a five-hole golf course? And closing it for a year is going to be uncomfortable for a lot of members. You're going to take everybody and put them over on one golf course, but it's something that's going to have to be done.
It's not unusual for golf courses to go through total renovations.
No, it's not.
I was last, was it last, last year? I guess it was last February. I was in Hilton Head, and one of the courses there was just completely closed down. And they were tearing up the fairways, everything. I mean, you know, just bulldozers were out there reconstructing the whole thing.
They just did that at New Seaberry. They closed the Dunes Course and it had, was closed all the summer. And, I mean, yeah, the, no, the Ocean Course, they closed.
Okay.
Totally.
Yeah. So, you know, the issues of, you know, what do you do as far as staff impact? What do you do with the memberships? I mean, those are probably not new things to be addressed.
As I mentioned before, right now, it's a, it's a serious problem in terms of trying to come up with a contract for new, a new cart lease.
And for the food and beverage operations? I mean, that's, yeah, I hadn't thought about the cart. That is an interesting question as to what you do with that.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't affect Bayberry, but you do a cart lease for both, for both places at once. And what are you going to do with all the carts you have? Besides the fact that you're paying for them and not using them, you're not going to be able to store them there.
Hmm, yeah.
So it becomes a real issue.
Well, the biggest, the biggest issue in all of that to me is, you know, what happens, the impact on employees and staff and how we deal with that. I mean, we can't just walk away.
Yeah.
That's, but, the other thing that I took from the National Golf Foundation report was an emphasis on player development. And they talked at some length about the need for the PGA professionals at both courses to be very active in, in player development and setting up programs and so forth. And you didn't really touch on that here, but I, I wondered if there had been any discussion at the Enterprise Committee.
Well, we, we did have some program, we had a program over the summer, a summer camp program that was run by Jim Hallett and David.
Dennis.
Dennis, okay.
Oh, okay.
And they've done a couple of pro, they did that, and they've also, they're making plans to develop a couple of other programs where they try to, you know, there are certain elements of the population that could be enticed into playing golf, like getting more women involved in golf, particularly from the business point of view, that, you know, in a lot of business opportunities, playing golf is part of it. And so we have looked at those things and are, and are working to develop them.
Okay. I'm not really, I guess my thoughts were more toward the youth programs and, you know, I'm not really aware of what kind of programs we have or whatever.
Yeah, we had a summer camp program. I don't remember the exact.
So it's not, it's not an ongoing weekly league play kind of thing for, for the youth in, in the communities in the area?
Yeah, we were, it's one of those things we kind of got off the ground a little bit later. We had Dennis and Jim do a, do a junior program, a couple of family programs at night. The current structure we are in, though, we don't, you know, we don't have a PGA pro on staff. We don't allow them to do lessons during the day. So something I approached with Dan, we're looking into doing that to get a pro in staff where we can grow the leagues a lot better, grow junior programs and all that. But we would need, we would need a PGA pro on staff to do that.
Okay.
So we are looking into that to grow like a PGA junior league and everything, but we did do a pretty decent job with Dennis and Jim in growing a junior program this year, as well as some family things they're working on, a couple of the things to grow it this year as well.
Okay. I had seen just recently something, I don't know if it was on the internet or if it was advertising, I think the pro at Hyannis and Barnstable has a, an indoor golf program with a training facility. And, you know, that's something that, I'm not saying we should do that right away, but it certainly is something that seems like that, that has some applicability to, to us.
Absolutely.
And both from a youth development as well as people with more maturity.
Right.
So, you know, and, you know, I think the combination, I think there's quite a few ideas out there that could be utilized to, to help develop more players for our courses, so, and make them more attractive to the existing people.
Right, yeah. Absolutely. We fully agree. It's just we got started a little late and we're on the, we're moving forward pretty good now, I believe there. Dennis can fill in a little bit more, 15 or 20 you got planned for, for next year. So we're, we wanted to make sure we're doing it correctly and not just jump into it.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm not suggesting that we accelerate it to the point, but we've got a lot on our plate. But, but it's certainly, I view the player development part as, as a key element.
Absolutely.
One of the things that was recommended, so, okay. I guess the other question, you know, the whole question of the structure of the Enterprise Fund, I mean, that was voted at a town meeting. So, you know, that's a, a structure that we operate in as, you know, that's just part of how we operate. We, and we don't have the ability to simply say, well, we're going to take a different tack here financially. If we were proposing something different, a sharing of capital costs, we'd have to be prepared to go to town meeting to ask for that. It's not saying that we couldn't operate within the bounds of the Enterprise Fund and ask the town taxpayers for funds for capital, but it would take a change in votes at town meeting, I think, to make the changes that you're talking about here. So that's a, that's a fairly challenging situation in terms of convincing 22,000 other people that they should pay for the $1,000, or 1,000-member population and contribute to that. So it's, it's a change in the way the town had looked at that over many years. Not saying it shouldn't be done, but it's, it's not an easy path. Not saying it shouldn't be done, but it's, it's not an easy path.
No, we, we understand that. And we know that that's not our decision to make. And that's why we proposed it for you, is it's really a decision that has to, you know, come from your direction. But we also understand that golf is valuable to the town for many reasons, not just to the people who play golf. And it has a lot of impact on the town. And its success, you know, helps with the success of the town in a lot of different ways.
I think historically, if you look back, if you went back to, um, the 1990s when, when golf was, was huge and really growing, courses were popping up all over the place and, and so forth. The towns that didn't have enterprise funds were probably banking quite a bit of money into their general fund for use in, for other purposes. So they had no need to change because they were getting money hand over fist that they could use to, to build schools, build town buildings, whatever the case may be. Now, you know, the worm has turned in that respect. And, you know, those communities haven't changed a great deal. They still don't have enterprise funds. And it's very difficult to find out from those communities exactly what they are spending.
They may not even know.
You may well be right.
And some of the enterprise funds seem to work in slightly different ways.
Right.
We tend, we seem to be following the rules of an enterprise fund very specifically in, in every way, shape and form. Not, that's not wrong, but some of the other courses seem to bend the rules a little bit with the other towns. I don't, you know, I, I don't know if bending the rules is the right word to use or not, but.
They ignore some of the real costs and then.
Yeah, they, and they, they hide some of the costs and then they pay them over here someplace when, you know, don't pay attention to the man behind the curtain.
I do think that in any case, it's certainly something we need to talk about. I, I suspect that we would find it very difficult to approach all the taxpayers with just simply an open book and just say, well, uh, the town should agree to pay whatever capital requirements are of the courses. I, I really doubt that that would pass the sniff test.
No, I don't think that would pass the sniff test either. And I, I don't think in the National Golf Foundation's recommendations that they kind of thought that that was the way to go either. I think they've felt and we, we feel from looking at their projections and from our sense of how things are working and how they've been moving forward, that for the most part, golf should be able to be fairly sustainable. But there are certain types of things, certain types of expenses that are going to come up that if you want to continue to have the product that you need to have, you, you need to spend that money. Like doing the renovation at Bayberry. That was a major impact. It, it, it took something out of golf for a couple of years. But in the end result has been the creation of a very prominent and popular facility, one that's going to be even more popular in the future. Because the word's getting around what great condition Bayberry is and what a great place to play. So, um, but sometimes you need, you know, you need a little help here or there. And not necessarily a lot, although what people consider a lot.
Well, I, I think that, that's what it's ultimately going to come down to is probably some parameters.
Some parameter of, you know, um, I, I don't, I, I don't think the need to have a, a constant open checkbook is something that, that we're talking about here.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right. Any thoughts from the group on those parameters was, I mean, that's, that's a big discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay. I think certainly we'd, we'd be interested in hearing those recommendations.
I think, if you don't mind asking from the group, that we did have, good job by Ted. We did have quite a few discussions and we are just right now batting around ideas. To Ted's point, there is no expectation of an open checkbook. There's no expectation of fully funding anything. The National Golf Foundation's report did show that trending, we're expected to go up, but that's not necessarily in giant leaps and bounds and there may be some necessity. And, you know, to your point, Mr. Hope, you can't just go behind before the taxpayers and ask them for a blank check and say, we expect all of you who don't participate in golf to, to, you know, by all means donate frequently and often. But there are certain aspects of golf that it needs to be recognized that are owned by the town, that are municipal resources, that are the responsibility of the taxpayers. Similar to me who doesn't play tennis or doesn't play pickleball or doesn't go out and, and play softball anymore. I did, it was wonderful, but I didn't do it anymore. I, as a taxpayer, I'm absolutely a hundred percent on board with, with my taxes representing those recreational facilities because I feel that that's a necessary part of my community. And that's one of the reasons why I live in Yarmouth. There are aspects of golf where we need that support from the taxpayers at certain times and in certain definable applications and amounts. Where it's that, that, the clubhouse and, and the grounds of a golf course. With all due respect, I know the members paid 36% of, of all of the revenue that goes in, of the expenses that come out of the golf course. But if the golf course were to close, close down tomorrow and we decided, okay, what are we going to do with that property? Anything that you guys get from that property isn't going back to the, the members. We're not, we're not stockholders. But the taxpayers are. So at some point in time, there's going to be a little bit of a vig that they're going to have to put up or should put up to help us maintain the quality of what we're putting forward, not pay for the whole thing. Tennis courts, you're not having somebody out sweeping that tennis court every day. You know, pickleball courts, same thing. We understand that the maintenance of a golf course is very high and significant. And that's why members are, and to their point, have been very understanding about the increase in fees and having to, you know, shoulder the burden of that maintenance. But it's still town-owned property. It's still a municipal asset. It's still a recreational base for any taxpayer who wants to, whether you're a member or not, you can still come out and play. We'd love to have you. And whether your grandchild or your aunt or your uncle or your brother comes, visits from off Cape, the municipal resource, you live in Yarmouth, they can come play on our golf course and have a great time. So everybody does ha, kind of have a stake in that game to that end. Sorry.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. I thank you again for the input and the time you spent looking at the report and the recommendations. I think it's well worth the conversation, so.
Yeah, just very quickly, I, I guess my biggest takeaway from all of this is that we're losing a quarter of a million bucks in the three peak summer months to leagues.
No.
No?
Losing between 320 and 350,000 dollars. And we base that on four months, June, July, August and September.
Okay.
Actually, those four months are not sixteen weeks, but they're seventeen and a half weeks. We calculated, we lose about 20,000 dollars a week to league play. Times seventeen and a half weeks is 350,000 dollars we lose every year if each time was sold to someone else.
That's what I was going to add, is it?
If they weren't, we're looking at a quarter of a million.
Right, is that?
We're not asking to stop the league play. We're asking you, the selectmen, to consider backing, joining with the golf enterprise committee.
And with golf operation.
Re-establishing the leagues to the, to the open times in the afternoon or in addition to that, to playing on the links. But we want to work with the leagues, find out what worked best with them. And we could put between 250,000 and 350,000 dollars more in our coffers every year. And that's only for the summer months. In the spring and the fall, they could play in the, in the mornings.
I see I jumped straight to the, the hot button issue.
Well, we all, we all know what.
Should chime in real quick on that. That would be if we sold every single tee time.
Well, that was going to be, is that, is that a net? Is that assuming that those times are put someplace else? And is it calculated for reselling those times and the losses that?
The whole, the whole point the GUC was trying to make there is that the, the leagues are using the prime time slot. So there is a loss of money that is happening there. If we did sell every tee time in the summer, we would, in theory, get about 300,000 dollars in extra revenue. That's if we sold everyone.
So that's without any league play occurring during the week?
That's without any league play in the prime time slots. We're not saying, you know, we don't want any league play. We're just saying, you know, we need, if we were to go this route, I mean, Ted had hit earlier that there's 232 members that do play in the league, so.
Right.
Just know that this would, this is quite the hot button issue and you could have 232 angry people in front of you if we didn't move these. I'm just, but there is definitely a cost associated with the leagues being in the morning when there is prime time. So we, on the operation, would love to move that somewhere to the, to the.
What's the cutoff time that's considered peak? Is it, is it 10? Is it 11?
Yeah, we'd like to move probably around 11, 12, 1 area where it's, it was not quite peak for us, you know. The six to 10 window is the prime time slots that we sell pretty regularly every day.
And there's, there's certainly, you know, I would think, you know, just thinking over the last summer, the two weeks around July 4th were just, wow.
We, we, we don't allow the leagues to play on the holiday week anyways.
Right.
But I, I understand what you're saying. We do need to, to understand that, you know, like we were saying, the summer is, is the busy, a lot of people play golf in the morning and then decide to go to the beach or, or something else in the afternoon, so.
Yeah.
There is a, there's a chance of loss of revenue that we are associating with the leagues right now.
And, and there is the, the difference between selling the tee time at the rack rate for the, for that particular time of year and what a member is paying. I mean.
That's why I asked if, if that was the, if that was the net, you know, if, if you're taking those tee times and, and say you're selling 75, I, I don't know what the ratio of daily member to non-member tee times is, but I have to assume that you've accounted for that in, in this 20,000 dollar number.
Right.
So I'm wondering if the 20,000 is based on the assumption that those people are put someplace else, that those tee times are now lost.
Well, if the, if the members were, if the members were placed somewhere else, then those tee times would then be available to be sold at the full rack rate. And the members would still be playing, all right. And yes, some of those tee times that the members get moved to might have been sold, but probably not as many.
Right.
Yeah, we would, we would look into moving the, to league play into this, the usually downtimes in the tee sheet where, you know, the 11 to 1 window is usually a downtime because it's around lunch that, and there's fee changes in there as well. That's usually the best time to put something into a tee sheet.
I, I understand that it wouldn't be a popular discussion, but I think that if, if your, your goal is to be self-sustaining, with the exemption of debt, I too strive to be self-sustaining with the exception of debt. I don't think that you can frown at, at least 250,000 dollars.
An extra quarter of a million a year would help.
I think, um, another thing, just to keep in that line of thinking as we move forward, while we're talking about the league play and perhaps changing that, it's important to point out that, that isn't, as far as I know, isn't going to be this upcoming year. And all of the league play happens at Bass River. And Bass River is going to undergo some, if, if everything goes according to plan, some significant changes, perhaps over a two-year period. So keeping that in mind, it could be three years out, four years out before any of this comes in, into our laps that we really need to make some significant decisions. And it may be easier to transition after that time has gone by with, with a valuable plan in place that really kind of respects what everybody's wants and needs are, but still re, that respects what the golf court needs financially. So because I don't want your inboxes to be filled up with emails tomorrow morning, nor do I wish mine to be either. As long as everybody knows that this isn't going to happen this year and there's a good possibility that we're, you know, I would say maybe four, three to four years out on it, gives us a really good opportunity to put a good, strong, widely-accepted plan in place to make that transition.
I, I appreciate that, but that's a million dollars. I, I, again, I only brought this up because I think that it's a discussion worth having because I think to forfeit that amount of money seems a little bit silly to me, but that's all I have. Thank you.
There is another, I, I think one of the things in the wastewater plan that probably has not come up for discussion is the fact that, um, the phasing that's, excuse me, currently proposed would involve Bass River being utilized for recharge facilities fairly early on. Is it, is it phase one? It is phase one.
That's, that was our understanding.
Whereas the Dennis courses would come up for use. I think it's in phase four or five. I think, and I think it's nine holes in each one of the, the Dennis courses. So I, you know, I think there's certainly some opportunity for discussion with, with our partners in that, with, with regard to what do we do for our members? You know, I don't think necessarily any one community would want to go it alone if there could be a possibility that, hey, you know, maybe you'd be, have some special privileges elsewhere for a period of time. And I don't know if that's, that's worthwhile pursuing, but, but it is something that, I, I don't think there's been a lot of discussion about that or knowledge about it.
That's the first I've heard that, that the Dennis courses would be involved as well.
Yeah, it is later down, you know, in phase four or five or probably what, 15 or 20 years down the line. But nonetheless, it is an impact.
Yeah, it's not uncommon for us to help each other towns. When Cranberry got hit very hard with the tornado, we did a very good special for the members to play at Yarmouth so they could play somewhere while they're doing their construction. So usually there is a lot of give and take there to, to make things happen.
Tracy.
I guess I'm wondering what it is that they're looking for from us tonight? Just generally, was this just an update of their?
I think more they're giving us their input on that report because they didn't have a chance to see the report with, well in advance to be able to give an analysis at or about the same time.
I think a lot of this has to do with Dan and they're not really, you know, other than relating to fees, I'm not sure really what's in our purview in terms of the structure of the course, the operating. That, that is in, you know, I'm surprised to see that there's even a question about chain of command here. So those things, I, I remember seeing the chart that they proposed relating to employment. And I thought it was very linear. I didn't see a lot of sense in it. So I was hoping that from that time and this information, perhaps staff was going to come up with a recommendation of their own. Or are these the recommendations that you're asking us to act upon or?
I, I met with the chairman today and I think it's fair to say that in practice, we've implemented a number of the changes that were recommended. Among, the most significant one is the line of report. So Scott, since he's taken over, reports directly to me. I meet with him on a, on an every Tuesday basis so that decisions that need to be made are expedited and can be done in a, in a fashion that's responsive to the, to the needs of running that kind of business. So I feel pretty comfortable there. We haven't fully memorialized that yet. So part of what we wanted to do is get the director's position resolved. Once that position gets resolved, then we would put forward to the board our organizational chart for you to consider and then endorse. But I think it's fair to say the NGF and certainly. to say the NGF and certainly J.J. Keegan touched upon the politics of golf to some large degree. And I think, and Ted, we, we had a frank discussion today about certain things. And I think Andy put it very well about how much money's on the line here on those prime times. And I think what the GEC is looking for is to make sure that if, you know, we reach out to the membership that you, and we do some changes here to try to capture that, you're probably going to hear about it. And I think the GEC's developed a really good working relationship with, with Scott, and they want to make sure that, that that decision was not made hastily or for any other reason, but that it makes good business sense to be sustainable. And I think that's more what Ted and the, and the GEC's presence in front of you tonight was to give you their unvarnished take on the report and plus give you thoughtful consideration as to their support for decisions that frankly are tough to make in a, in a business operation and has some degree of politics associated with it.
Okay. So do we have a timeline where some of this will be wrapped up? Because I feel like we've been...
Well, so the, next week, the plan is to get, I want, I'd like to get your commentary on the RFP for the F and B piece before it goes out to the marketplace. I want to have you have an opportunity as a group to be able to give some commentary. The timeline there would be, we take in the comments, we, we present it to you next week, and by January 7th meeting, we take in the comments that you might have. We do some revisions. We get that out on the street. The RFP for the POS service is a little bit more straightforward. That should be ready to go on the street very shortly. Would be underway in that respect. I've already discussed with Ted what an interview committee would look like. For after the first of the year, we would set up an interview committee for the director's position. And so I think we feel much better about that. Obviously, you've heard some insight tonight as to one of our big challenges with the F and B negotiation would be what happens to Bass River. And, and I know with wastewater, that's a big part of the upcoming meetings. And certainly in January, we're going to know a lot more about that. But we'll tackle that issue when we get there. But other than that, I feel like in the GEC, I think, we, we got a plan from the National Golf Foundation where the membership fee structure needs to be, how it can be presented on an annual basis. And we feel like we're in good shape to get started with that.
What about the marketing position?
So that, that marketing position, so there's some commentary that the POS system, and Ted touched upon it in his presentation, the modern POS system should be able to address some of this, our weakness, I guess, if you will, of responding to real-time marketing and challenging and this or that nature. So what I wanted to do was get the director's position on board. I think there's some good commentary received about the full-time need to develop the marketing, not so much marketing, but the player development. That's not lost on me and the fact that we don't have a full-time PGA pro. So there is an opportunity to do something because we have not filled the superintendent's position as of now. And we also have a retired position that hasn't been filled, so we have some options. But I wanted to reserve that at a time in which we have a director of golf on board and that we can present it to the GEC. And together, we can make a decision as to how it should go forward. I don't necessarily feel like in this interim position, it would be good to do that until there's a certain amount of permanency in the staff.
Good. Okay.
Can I, can I just make a couple of comments? First of all, we asked, when the National Golf Foundation was making its presentation, I think the question was raised whether they had made the presentation to the GEC. And the comment was, no. And we said, okay, why don't you review the, allow the GEC to review the recommendations? And when they come back, then we'll, we'll decide on a, on a path forward. So I think, I think this is just what we asked for. And, you know, so I think that's, that's, that's the direction we're pursuing at this point. And I appreciate Dan's explanation. I think that is good at this point. I, I do have a concern about the marketing position. And, and just from personal experience in business, it's wonderful to have a software system that supports your efforts. But people get the job done. And if we don't, I think we need to have a point of sale system, but we, we need to have that, that marketing position and in one way or another. I'm not saying it has to be a person. It could be any combination of things. It could be a consulting, consulting position, growing to a, a full-time employee. I don't, I don't know what the best structure is. But, but I think it's a mistake not to have, not to move forward in that area and, and market heavily what we've, we've developed in terms of the quality of our courses. So, you know, I, I, if all we do is acquire a POS system and expect our current employees to carry out some undefined marketing plan, I think we'll do ourselves a real disservice.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't really have any more questions to ask. I just want to once again thank you for your input and the time that you've put into this. I was among those who wanted to hear from you in the aftermath of the Golf Foundation report. So I think your, your analysis, your recommendations are incredibly helpful and are important for us to consider and, and, and keep in mind as we move forward. So the only other comment is, and I understand the frustration, you know, when we hear from the National Golf Foundation and we compare sort of how other golf courses are run and how they handle capital, and then we sort of compare it to this town. I, I sense, I sense a little bit of the frustration that maybe the town should be carrying more or doing more. And that maybe there's a way to bend the rules financially so that maybe, maybe there are other ways to account for this. When we set up the enterprise fund, I mean, there's strict accounting requirements associated with doing this. And this town has worked incredibly hard over the past several years to strengthen its financial position, enhance its stabilization and reserves, and do so much to put itself in a much stronger financial position. So everything that we do, even the smallest things, do get attention from the Department of Revenue or the bond markets or others in terms of how we operate. So having said that, I do know that the challenges actually are going to get greater because of the work that is going to have to be done on the golf course. So I hear the message loud and clear. I, I got it from the Golf Foundation when they came in, is that we've got, the burden isn't getting any easier. It's actually getting more challenging for us. And I think for that reason, I think it's incredibly important to have your insight and your guidance on all of this as we move forward. So once again, thank you.
All right. I, I too want to thank you for all your hard work and diligence and advice with respect to this really crucial period in golf. And there's more work to be done to develop a lot of these ideas. But I think you have the overview pretty well under control, and it provided a lot of very good feedback. So thank you very much for being so responsive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is wastewater update, 6:45 item.
So on the wastewater front, we wanted to use this as an opportunity to just communicate with you any of the latest information that we might have received. Also, Rich wanted to update the board on the cost recovery plan as we know things presently today and kind of get you in position for the things that we need to cover in January and have decision points on. So there's a couple of memos in, or there's at least one memo in your packet from Gary Ellis, the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee relative to their thought process and something for you to consider at the high point of that. And actually, Gary's at the microphone, so I'll let him explain that to you. And then secondarily, you know, and Rich can certainly back that information up, and I think I saw Kurt in the room, what the latest from the Water Resources Advisory Committee is on the topic. So.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. I just want to, if I can, go back for a point of, to clarify something that Vida had asked Mike Stone about the state match. So I think there's some confusion on that because the, going up to the 50% state match at the register of deeds, that's already been passed. That's already approved for next year. What we're talking about, or what you were talking about, Mike, is the $20 million supplemental funds that would go into the CPA fund. But the match has already been approved. So currently, we got like 274. And I think, Karen, you have the figures. So we'd go up to approximately 550 next year. And that's already been approved. That would be our match at 3%. So if you go to 1 and 1/2%, you entirely wipe that out. And also round two and three, which is currently, I believe it's around 26,000, Karen? That would go to, at 3%, that would go to 52,000. And that would be wiped out at 1 and 1/2. So that's just on the state match. That's not the matching funds that we were talking about before. For the eight to one, for every dollar we spend, we look for matching funds from the applicants, which in the past has been like eight to one. So I just want to clarify that so we understand that. So the real estate surcharge, that's already been approved. And that's going into effect in January.
Correct.
Gary, can you address in your memo the new information related to the $100,000 exemption that you put in there?
Yeah. That was just something that we wanted to introduce because there's other alternatives we thought we could talk about instead of reducing us by 50%. So to kind of summarize that so people can understand it. So the first $100,000 of your valuation of a property, whether a million dollars or your $200,000, that would be exempt from CPA surcharge. So the ultimate payback to the taxpayer would be for the lower-income people, for people who don't have large houses, the first $100,000 you'd be exempt. So that would actually translate into approximately a $500,000 tax-in decrease for the average taxpayer. And we would lose that from our income. But we would ask that you could turn that back into, well, that's a tax savings for the average taxpayer and reroute that into that to try and save us the 500,000. When you're, when you're cutting us by 50% to 1 and 1/2%, essentially what you're doing, and we have the chairman here, open space, we are entirely their budget, historic, we are basically the historic committee's budget. Recreation, we're probably 75% of their budget. And affordable housing in this town, most of that money comes from us. So by cutting that 50%, you got to realize you're cutting those four areas 50% also. So what we're basically asking is maybe we explore some other alternatives to come up with some funding so that we're not, you're not asking us to cut our budget 50%. I know you wouldn't propose that to any other thing in this town. And we just feel it takes more input. And the exemption was one that we came up with through the coalition. We'd be the first one on the state who does that. Most of the other communities outside of Cape Cod, or a lot of them, do have that exemption in there. So you understand the first $100,000 of your valuation would be exempt from the CPA?
To be clear, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong. So preserving a 3% CPA surcharge preserves the full match from the state?
Yes.
But your point being that the $100,000 exemption, instead of raising a total surcharge of about 1.9, reduces the total amount of the surcharge collected to about 1.4 million dollars in the next year's estimate, but still preserving the state match?
Yes. So the state match would still stay what it is if we stayed at 3%.
To Gary's point, there is, it's not uncommon in other communities off Cape that they give the $100,000.
Yeah, we, we'd be the first one on Cape. But we'd also be the first one on Cape to go to 1 and 1/2%. So I guess the CPAs, to summarize my memorandum, is we would ask possibly that we could sit down with Richard and come up with some alternatives. I don't believe, well, I know our committee is not going to sit down and agree with the 50% reduction. So as you know, I feel like when we get to town meeting, I think we all do, I mean, the point is to try and get this, try and get it through the taxpayer and have everybody agree to it. But we're not going to agree to the 50% reduction. And obviously, we can go to town meeting with our own article. So we really don't want to go that way, but we're not going to agree to the 50% cut. And I don't think we should for the amount of time and effort and money we put into this town. That would be like saying our, our import and our dollar value has no input to this town. And none of us believe that.
Nobody up here believes that either.
I know. But I mean, when you talk about wastewater, I mean, all you have to do is drive down 28, look at the Cavalier, look at the Parker's River Bridge, look at Baxter Mill. Those are all projects that we put like a million dollars into. And with the Cavalier, we got, how much back, Karen? Like $10 million?
Cavalier was...
Huge amount of matching funds. And you're going to be saying goodbye to that because it's, it's seed money. Even when we get to the drive-in site, the whole reason for them coming to us for the drive-in site, it's seed money. For a $7 million project, they were looking for three and a half from us. So we didn't even approve all of that. But they need the seed money to go for other grants. So if you look on the back of your memorandum, we have like four projects there that they've told you. We've basically put on hold without knowing what we're going to have for funding next year. That's why we're trying to push this. We've been meeting all fall about these projects, and we held off on approving because they're big ticket items. But we can't approve $1 and 1/2 million for something not knowing what our funding could be cut 50%.
Were we talking about, what year was the proposal for the funding for the split? Was it, was it in this year's round of grants?
I don't believe it's actually been proposed yet.
So the Water Resource Advisory Committee's plan...
Obviously, we're having the conversation.
...was to begin a 1 and 1/2% water infrastructure fund, beginning FY '21, would be July 1, 2020. That's, as you, what we call, the pre-funding phase of the plan. The full boat of the full debt service of a proposed wastewater debt service bond is likely not coming on board to 2025. And so we're, the committee's recommendation, the funding plan is the full 1 and 1/2% to get it in place in anticipation of 2025. But there's a period there at the beginning where it's banking money to pre-fund the plan.
Have you looked at this proposal in terms of how you would propose to transfer that $100,000 into a different funding formula?
It doesn't impact, the reduction here doesn't get put somewhere else. It's, you have, it's a multiple steps.
No, but I'm sure that what, that's the, that would be why we would request it, in order to be able to find funding elsewhere, correct?
Right. So in the easy scheme of things, right, if you had a 1 and 1/2% increase in one surcharge and 1 and 1/2% decrease in another, that's easy math, that's an offset. And something like this would be similar, except it's not a one-for-one offset. And so the, I'll rattle off a few numbers here. We did, Karen's office did do some work on this. And so right now for FY '21, roughly, the CPA surcharge at 3% is 1.9 million. A 3% surcharge of the...
A 3% surcharge with a 100%, $100,000 exemption is about 1.4 million. A 1.5% CPA surcharge, no exemption, is about $1 million. So a 3% now is 1.9, a 3% with the exemption is about $500,000 less at 1.4. And at 1.5, the strict 50%, is about $1 million. So it's about $400,000 less than that. And the difference actually gets to be a little bit less when you factor in now that 3% with the exemption, you're maintaining the state match.
So we're left with a $500,000 gap.
And so if you were to, just exactly to your point, Mr. Tally, if you moved off of the 1.5 split each way, for example, and decided, well, let's do, let's look, consider a 3% with $100,000 exemption, that decision saves $500,000. But then the other side of that equation is now we've asking to adopt a 1.5% water infrastructure fund, which is raising about $1 million. And so you've, that, those two decisions in combination netted to about an additional $500,000.
Do we have any information on a residential exemption? What that might involve in terms of impact on our residential taxpayers?
We could certainly, that would be a process, well, I leave it to Dan to explain further, but that would be a process of getting our assessors and finance department in front of you to talk about the impacts. In other communities that have considered that, there's also been a lot of public outreach and meetings and hearings regarding with the non-resident taxpayers with that regard, because those are basically the ones that bear the brunt of that type of shift. Basically, if your residential exemption is basically, if you're a resident of the town, you get a $100,000 amount, for example, excluded from your property tax bill, and the overall levy doesn't change, which means that somebody else has to pick it up. And the ones that pick it up are the non-residents and the commercial.
I mean, that's certainly something that we could ask the finance team to kind of come in front of you and ballpark what that looks like. My understanding that that was a popular option in communities that had, I lost a lot of full-time residents, and we have a high density of full-time residents, and not so much with the, with the second homeowner operations. But one of the things that Rich and I had discussed on this topic when we saw this come through from, from Gary, was understanding that the debt, the heavy debt service on the wastewater doesn't kick into 2025. Perhaps we do something less than the 1.5% on the whiff. I'm just going to make up the number. But say you did a half percent increment or three-quarters percent increment, you begin still collecting money. We're collecting money from other sources, like the short-term rental tax, as we go along. And if the, so over the next four years, it continues to build up with the idea that in 2025, depending upon what that debt service looks like, if it, if it's something that, you know, that you need to recalibrate that whiff calculation, you could do it at that time. But at least this way, it gets on the books and you start collecting some money. And we've been really trying to be sensitive to the idea that it's a neutral impact on the property tax. And I think this gives us enough wiggle room that a half a million dollars is, if we could, if we could get that on town meeting, get it passed this year, collecting that money towards the first payment off in 2025, with some other revenue sources that, you know, with the short-term tax and some cash reserves that we would propose next week to you that could be put into, into a stabilization fund for a future debt service, I think we'd have a pretty robust finance recovery plan. And I, and I don't think we fully yet understand the impact of the short-term rental and what that's going to mean for us. And certainly by 2025, we're going to have a really good understanding of what that means. But it does give us an opportunity to do something substantive on this topic, provide for some money to be put away, and stay within the 3% tax surcharge. It's an interesting concept.
Where would the half a million dollars come from?
Well, so when Rich, actually, do you have that, the slide, finance options available? Are you ready for that?
No, I don't have it.
All right. So as part of like the borrowing schedule, we were matching revenue taken in on that borrowing schedule for the debt service, and we had it lined up that way. So without having the chart in front of me, I don't want to speak to that. But, but at collecting a half a million dollars per year by 2025, you, you'd have an opportunity to put some money away.
But you're talking about the, the, what is the term for this? The resident, essentially, it's a residential exemption.
$100,000 exemption.
The CPA surcharge. So where does, where does that money?
Well, that money actually never gets taxed, right? It doesn't get taxed. So you get, we would, if we didn't do anything but just implement the surcharge or the exemption, that would be a net gain for the taxpayers. That's correct.
So they'd only be taxing after the 100,000?
After the 100,000, that's correct.
And so, so that would lower the amount that would be available for CPA funding by half a million? Yes. But the state match would stay the same.
And that was the key, the state match. It preserves their 3% state match availability, so the impact is much less dramatic.
Right. So when you think about it, if we're, say, if we're going to get a state match of 500,000 next year, instead of that being reduced by half, it would stay at that. That's 250,000 for the 500,000 that we're asking for. Or asking you to consider it. What we're trying to do is find some other ways. We all agree wastewater needs to be done. We're trying not to take a 50% cut, because we feel that greatly reduces our program. Greatly.
Eric. Thanks, Gary. I have a few ideas. I think, Dan, were you kind of referring to an increasing scale, starting low now, just to establish the fund and maybe ramping it up towards some number?
Yep.
I think that idea probably has some merit. And I'd like to see what that looks like, because, you know, if we start it low and scale it up gradually, you know, property values will continue to go up in those five years, and that would essentially be the offset for the final number. I'd like to take a little, a bit more of a look at that.
I believe, and Rich's, I know, tendently puts together some figures on this to ask him to do it tonight. So I think we're kind of asking to give Rich the time to look at this and get you that info, so that we look into it.
That would be great.
It's very complicated, but he's very good at this.
I'm good at understanding some of those things, not all of them. Gary and I have had a discussion in the past, and I don't know if it's even feasible, about tying the sewer project into water rates. We all know that water rates are going to go up at some point for a variety of reasons. And it's my understanding that to, I don't want to say tap into the water enterprise fund, but being able to use that as the account where monies go and monies are, you know, things water-related, such as, you know, potable water, sewer water. I'm not sure, but I think other towns base it or have similar fee structures. I think the relationship of Provincetown and Truro comes to mind, because I've worked in those towns where, you know, building is capped, because the water amount you use determines the water amount that goes into the system. So I'm wondering if they charge for the water amount, the amount of water you're using, not necessarily the amount of wastewater you're creating, knowing that it's, it's all the same. So that's a long way of saying, I'm interested in knowing if there's a way that we can tie this. It seems like we have some time now. So maybe an investigation into whether or not it requires legislation to, to, to kind of merge those two. And my last point is, you know, when we were debating this 1.5, 1.5, somebody, I think maybe it was you, Gary, at some point said that, you know, even, even a 1 and a 2 would be more agreeable than that. So just in doing some quick math based on what Rich said, if the, if the value of the 3% is at one point, is 1.9 million, that means 1% is about 630,000. You know, even that is better than the 500,000 we would get by allowing that $100,000 decrease of, exempting the first $100,000 of tax value. So, you know, it's not a big, you know, $130,000 difference between the two, isn't a lot, but it's something. So, you know, if that gets us to, if a 2 and a 1 split, again, it's not going to, it still leaves us with a little bit of gap between the 1.5, but it's more than the $100,000 exemption, albeit less than the 1.5% that we would love to have. But again, I don't think it's going to serve anybody to go to town meeting floor, and you know, have the board of selectmen throwing out an article, have the community preservation committee throwing out another article, then we have to have another article to cover the event that one passes and the, or one fails. I mean, we've done that before. You know, we've had articles and other articles as backups. So I think that confuses people. So if, you know, I think that if we could come to an agreement prior to having to do something like that, whether it's the 500, or the $100,000 exemption, or a straight 1%, or an increasing scale, the water rate issue might take a little bit longer, but I think that those are all...
Well, I think the water rate issue needs to be considered, because as you and I know, we work in other towns. And when you're in Boston, even Barnstable, the water rates to hook up to a water line up there are just, they're mind-boggling, but that money goes into that fund. So if you go from a 2-inch water line to a 6-inch water line, you're talking $40,000, just in Barnstable. So I don't feel it's my job to do that. I'm just proposing, without gutting our program for 50%, that maybe we look at these other items.
So those are my three suggestions as to things that we might investigate a little bit further.
Tracy.
Thanks for bringing this forward. I think, you know, keeping the match is a very valuable thing. And from what I'm seeing, it's, it's tax-neutral. So, you know, the taxpayer, we have 3%. It would be the same if we put 1.5%.
Correct.
With, so personally, I think we should support the transfer. I, I'd be concerned about ramping it up, because if we ramp it up, we're talking about 2025, it seems so far away. But in 2025, we're going to be looking probably for funding for Phase 2. And I don't know what that looks like yet. But if we can avoid this, having to, to do this by transferring the 1.5% and getting a fund, you know, a healthy fund, doing a half a percent and only getting this much, I think might put us in a position where, you know, in 2025, we're searching for something else. Whereas the, the money here could possibly pay debt for some of Phase 2. I'm not sure what your proposal is for, for Phase 2 for 2025. But I think we need to plan in advance, and seeing as this is a net-neutral thing, which is what we were requesting in the first place, I think it serves the purpose of, of what we're trying to accomplish. I'd be interested in looking at the numbers and having Rich do some analysis on this, some further analysis. But do you see any drawback in this type of?
So to achieve the goal that the board stated of, you know, net, you know, neutral change overall, if you went with the proposal of the 3% CPA surcharge and $100,000 exemption, you preserve the state match.
Right.
Which has a value to it, and you save half a million dollars. You would not be neutral if you went with a 1.5% water infrastructure fund. But to Dan's earlier point, if you went, for example, to a 1% water infrastructure fund to start, that's about $630,000. And the $100,000 exemption on the CPA saves you about half a million. It's not exact, but it's pretty darn close to your goal. And based on the projections we've done, that 1% water infrastructure fund surcharge would not fund the projected debt service. But as you know, in the plan that's been presented to you, we have a lot of projections and estimates. And so maybe some of those estimates come out better than we think. Maybe the short-term rentals come out, end up becoming, five years from now, greater than what we're projecting. Maybe we get a subsidized loan as opposed to a zero, a zero-percentage loan. So things could change, and so, you know, there's merit to that suggestion as far as exploring it in that vein. But if everything comes to fruition as projected, you'd need a 1.5 eventually. But do you need a 1.5 on fiscal year '21 when the debt service isn't till 2025?
So Phase 2 would be 2025, though, correct?
Phase 2 would be probably coming online closer to 2030.
Okay. So it's not the five-year increments? Okay.
But I'm assuming you, you've accounted for the accumulate, you know, the compounding of, you know, this money's going to make money while it's sitting there for five years, correct? Have you calculated that into?
No, I haven't provided for any investment interest.
Well, I'm just saying that if we're, if we're trying to establish the fund in 2021, and it's, you know, and it, which doesn't come online until 2025, it will be increasing every year, and, and there will be some compounding. I don't know what the value of it is, probably hardly anything, but...
The projection was it'd be about $5 million in the bank.
At the end of five years.
Five to six million dollars by 2025. With the premise being that in the early years of that debt service, all the funding sources that we pieced together are not going to be sufficient on every single year basis. There'd be some years where there's greater, some years where it's short, but that bank of money, that pre-funding, would carry you through any of those scenarios. And so, you know, it's a simple analysis. I could, I could run it what it looks like with these different proposals and...
Rich, I think it might be helpful to explain a little bit to Mr. Tally's point about if we did something with the water and wastewater fund that you had discussed, even in areas in years in which you're short. The fund would have enough significant cash reserves in it to pay any debt service that would be done.
I don't want to conflate the arguments, but one of the proposals and one of the recommendations of the Water Resource Advisory Committee was to propose a water resource enterprise fund that would consolidate the water account now, the septic plant, stormwater, currently the general fund, and the proposed wastewater into one enterprise fund. And what would happen from that would be that all the net surplus's or losses from various rates that are set associated with each of those activities would go to one retained earnings and would be available to fund one or the other of the operations on a annual basis. However, you know, there, and we'd have to get, this is a very detailed area of municipal finance law, but I think we would need, just on the broad brush of it, we need to be very careful taking a position that we're going to set a rate for one utility that's going to fund the costs of another utility. And because there's, you know, the famous case is the Emerson College case, that basically if you're raising fees for one thing in excess of what you need for that thing, essentially what you're doing is raising an additional tax, and you're not allowed to do that. But if you have a good faith effort that you're setting a water rate, and you're setting a sewer rate, and you're setting a septic holler rate, and a stormwater rate perhaps, and they all, and they have surpluses in each of them, and they fall into a common retained earnings... all, and they have surpluses in each of them and they fall into a common retained earnings, do you have a problem funding some of the next year's operating costs out of that retained earnings? No, you don't. But you can't overtly go in with an intention of overfunding one thing to pay for something else.
But don't they all relate to clean water?
That, and this has been our argument since we started talking about this wastewater issue, is it all has to do with water, whether it's drinking water or water that you flush down the toilet.
Right. And just doing what we're doing at Parker's River relates to that. That's why it was, you know, the flushing and the nitrogen reduction in Swan Pond is going to be tremendous.
Yeah, no, but in terms of setting the fees, I mean.
I know what, that's what we have, Rich.
I want to go to Mark for a minute. Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I agree with Eric's recommendations in terms of how to proceed. The, the thing that we need to caution ourselves is, is that it, there are very strict guidelines on how to set costs for fees. And Rich's point should be well taken because to the extent that we're looking to recover more money or to underwrite capital for future capital expenditures, we could find ourselves with a legal problem on our hands. So this is something that we're going to have to carefully look at. I agree with the idea of looking at these to help cover the cost. I like the idea of water and sewer funds. We just need to be cognizant that there are strict guidelines that the state has in terms of how you set rates, what those rates are based on. And this is an area that's been pretty well litigated as well. So we just need to be cognizant of that as we figure out how to sort of move down this particular path. But I support Eric, your recommendations overall in terms of studying this and looking at this and moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Norm, you have anything else?
No, I brought up the residential exemption. I think that needs to be pursued as well.
Okay. Anything else, Tracy?
Nope. I, I appreciate the work of the CPA trying to work and find common ground and I just look forward to getting more details and seeing if we can get it done. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you if you can put the time into looking into this.
Do you have anything further, Rich?
Um, no.
I think he has enough, he has enough homework now, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gary.
Thanks, Mike.
We're going to move on to the next item, Route 6A corridor improvements.
Mr. Chairman, this is another item that has a certain amount of complexity associated with it. I want to thank the team led by Kathy Williams and Karen Green on this effort. This has been a big pickup with Jeff Colby to try to get to some decision point for you. And what I would say is that Kathy's done a good job capsulating, capsulating the corridor that we looked at, the public commentary. And at this point, we're at a position where we really need further direction as to what would be the desired outcome of the board on this project. So without any further ado, I turn it over to Jeff and Kathy.
Kathy Williams, Town Planner.
And Jeff Colby, Public Works Director.
I think Dan gave a good overview of what we're trying to get to today. I think any project like this is a little, can get a little complicated when there's a lot of strong emotions that come into play. But as you're probably all well aware, many years ago, there were some concerns about speed and safety on Route 6A from Winslow Gray, I'm sorry, from Willow Street to Union Street. The town's done quite a few things to try and remedy that over time. We had a road safety audit that was done by the Cape Cod Commission and some safety improvements were implemented. Chevron signs at Summer Street, new crosswalks, vegetation pruning, a flashing speed sign. There's still some continued concerns along Route 6A. So there's further public meetings and there's also a study done by the Cape Cod Commission in 2017 to look at different corridor streetscape amenities with regard to improving overall aesthetics on street parking signage, a lot of issues related to sidewalks and crosswalks and Village Center amenities. To help move this forward and come up with some actual visualizations and concept designs that the public could get a better understanding of, the town has hired VHB Consulting Firm along with the water main replacement project that's being done along 6A. And they did a great job coming up with a bunch of different recommendations and concept designs that I think gave the public a really strong idea of what those recommendations from the Cape Cod Commission's study really meant. The PowerPoint presentation that was given at three public meetings in May are in your packet and you might need to reference that as we move along tonight. But we did have the three public meetings. We had over 150 people attend those three public meetings. It was a lot of dynamic and diverse input. There's also a summary of all of those comments as well as written comments that we received afterwards in your packet. So basically staff kind of tried to digest all of that information and get to the, the crux of what might have been some of the functional and safety issues along Route 6A that people were concerned about, in addition to getting a general understanding of, of how they wanted to proceed. So we developed a, some discussion topics that are also included in your packet that outlined the different functional and safety issues and then came up with some different options on how we might be able to address some of those issues. Yes, it is quite lengthy bit of information. We may not get to all the input today, but at least we'll give you a good understanding of, of kind of where we stand right now. But the options range from something relatively simple to a little bit more complex to, to implement. So we're really hoping to get some board of selectmen input and maybe we can have more of an interactive conversation as we go through some of the, some of the comments here. So what did we kind of hear consistently throughout the public hearings? There's a lot of discussions about undergrounding utilities with regard to improving safety. Apparently a lot of people run into the utility poles along 6A. Also the overall aesthetics and then also the impacts to trees from pruning for the overhead utilities. This is a relatively complex idea. I think people just kind of say, let's underground utilities without realizing how involved it is. So maybe we need to get a little bit more information on the process, the timeline and costs and how you would actually connect all the buildings where there would be need to be transformers and that type of thing in order to get a better understanding. So one of the recommendations was to requesting maybe to have VHB, who is very familiar with this and has done it in other communities, develop that memo so we'll have additional information to talk to the public about and get an idea of really is that something that's practical to implement along 6A? And whether, and again, another point is would that just be within the Village Center itself or would it be a section all along Captain's Mile that might be interested?
Can I just comment on that? You know, I raised that question directly with the Department of Transportation through the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And it was a flat-out no.
Okay.
And frankly, they said it's a waste of time because if you go to the utilities and they have, the comment is, we'd be happy to do it, but it's at your cost.
Right.
Right.
So this would give us an idea what the costs would be.
Okay.
And we're all looking for input from you guys, whether that is something that you would want to pursue or not, or whether it's an issue of it's going to be so extensively expensive, it's not really supported by Mass DOT as a tip project, whether that's something we want to pursue.
I think it's about a million bucks a mile.
Yeah.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah, I think it's more than that these days, yeah.
I think so too. You know, I think it would be unfortunate, given the attitudes of the DOT and utilities to, to put that as a primary requirement. It may be a long-term goal, but if everything is going to be, that is to be done on Route 6A is contingent on trying to get underground utilities, it'll never get done.
That's our concern as well.
Okay.
So, so one of the other things that was mentioned was a speed study in the Village Center. The speeds kind of vary. Going westbound, it's 35 miles per hour. Going eastbound, it's 30 miles per hour. So something similar that was done to Center Street and having that traffic study done to see whether there are mitigating circumstances that could reduce the speeds within the Village Center itself. And that's something that either the Cape Cod Commission or possibly VHB could help the town with. There was also a lot of concerns, I mean, a lot of things we had been talking about was improving safety along 6A. People had a lot of concerns about the safety at the actual intersections, the intersections of Union Street and 6A and the intersection of Willow Street and 6A. So in order to pursue doing anything at those particular intersections, and again, this would be a long-term project, not necessarily part of what we're talking about for, for general corridor improvements, but was to do a road safety audit at those intersections, which is the first step to doing anything about making any major improvements at those intersections. And then the last thing that came up kind of consistently throughout the comments was maintaining the historic context of any improvements that get done and making sure that we're not urbanizing a rather rural and beautiful corridor. So I don't know if the board has any input on the speed study or the traffic evaluations at the intersections.
I think they're both valuable pieces of information to be able to make decisions with. I don't know what the cost is related to the studies, but I think it'd be helpful for us to be able to make any decision related to either one of those issues.
I think as far as cost goes, it would be in the tens of thousands, you know, probably closer to that 10 for a simple speed study. The intersection studies might be a little bit more, you know, closer to the 10 to $20,000 range. For the intersection studies, we could potentially get help from the Cape Cod Commission on that might help reduce some of the cost.
How do we fund the Center Street study?
The Center Street study was, was just with department funds, road maintenance funds. This is a little bit different stretch as well. This is a state-owned stretch and so that's why we want to get some feedback from the board as to whether to, to continue to, to spend money if that's a worthwhile endeavor. At this point, we've spent funds with, as Kathy mentioned, VHB to do the studies and we are moving forward with a water main replacement project. So there are additional funds that need to be expended in the design and implementation of that, but we wanted to get some other feedback for other components from the board.
So those two, the two intersections, though, there are data, there is data that we already have relating to accidents that I saw in here already.
Correct.
In your opinion, do those rise to the level that need to be addressed as in relation to other intersections in town?
That's a great question. We have done a comprehensive intersection study in the past and probably is 10-plus years old at this point of all the intersections within town. They're probably not the highest crash intersections in town, those two, but certainly as part of the feedback we heard from that community and in this area that's most affected by this, it's something they wanted to have looked at, but there are other intersections that are higher crash locations within town.
So what you're saying is typically this wouldn't in itself trigger a study?
It wouldn't be the first priority for a study if we're looking at simply on statistics throughout Yarmouth.
And what else would come from that expenditure of money to get the, what, what data, what other data would we be able to get from, from going through that exercise?
Well, the crashes are just one component of that road safety audit. The other things they would look at is their way to, you know, improve site distance. There's some geometry improvements that could potentially, it's a, it's a good exercise. We just went through this for Route 28. It's really the starting point for a major project is to look at are there low hanging fruit, easy items that can be implemented, or if there's bigger challenges that need to be considered in a larger design project. They do look at a very comprehensive approach, streetlights, you know, volume of traffic. All those things are considered.
I, I, I know a lot of us were at these meetings. I know I was at one of them, but.
I was.
I do, I do also have the same concern about all of these particular, well, potential proposals in relation to what it could create in terms of visually in a historic district. So it's such a balance in this area.
Yes.
And as you said, there's some strong feelings, but even today I was saying that there was a letter to the editor from somebody in Barnstable who's going through the same struggles with their 6A in Barnstable. They put up curbing which reduced parking. But Barnstable also did something different where they took control of that stretch of road from the state.
Right.
So they have more flexibility in terms of what they do with that piece of property. So.
How do you do that?
They, they petitioned the state and they, they got it. So from, it, it also comes at a cost because they're now responsible for the plowing and the maintenance of the road, but they are in control of Barnstable Village, that stretch. It's, it tells you when you're going down by the old jail, I think right before there it tells you that it's, you're leaving the.
Leaving the state highway, entering the local roads, right.
I'm glad you brought that up because on the surface, this strikes me as a lot of time and potentially a lot of money, talk about things that we might want to do to a road that we don't own. So, I mean, in reality, what's the likelihood of any of this coming to pass?
Well, the idea behind this entire effort was to look at it more of a, a master plan, if you will. There might be some easy to implement components of it. And I think later in the presentation, Kathy has some commentary on that, some of it might be able to be implemented with a maintenance project. It doesn't necessarily have to rise to a, a major tip project, but it could certainly on the intersections. If there are some warranted improvements there, those could be, you know, larger scale tip transportation improvement projects. But if we had a, a master plan of what the community would like this to look like, even when we did relatively straightforward improvements like replace the water main, how we could maybe implement some components of that, whether it's to change the sidewalk, improve the curb cuts or add some drainage, could potentially be part of that project. So there's a number of different ways to proceed. We just wanted to get a sense from the community, how do you want this put back together if we do any work out there? And we had some very diverse input in that, during that process.
So, you know, we can develop a plan and, and say to the state, we are replacing the water mains. While we do that, this is how we would like to put the sidewalks back together with this particular curbing and so on and so forth. And they would allow that?
Yeah. So the way that that would work is we have to get a permit from Mass DOT for even just the, the water main work. And as part of that permit, we could say, well, we want to have, you know, the sidewalk look like this when we're done. It wouldn't necessarily be a whole-scale impact to the entire road profile, but at least in certain areas, that could be allowed under our permit, yes.
I, I think about the Parker's River Bridge. I mean, the Parker's River Bridge technically was a town project because the town funded it. And when they don't have to expend money, they're a lot more amenable and allowing things to happen. It's when you're asking them for, for dollars. But I mean, essentially that was a project that the town and Kathy worked with and got their permission to be able to complete.
Under our permit, right.
I don't know if they were amenable. I'm just, I gotta say that.
We had to meet all their standards, right.
It did take five or six years to get through their process, but that was a permit project as well.
And that didn't cost them anything.
No.
Yeah.
They're doing some inspections for us at the.
A little bit, but not a lot.
Yeah, it's really nice of them.
We should send them a thank you note.
Yes, we should.
Okay. I was just curious as to, you know, what kind of room we have to create our vision here.
It's not unlimited, right. We're going to meet certain requirements that they have, yes.
One? Yeah. If you sense my frustration.
Already?
Yeah.
We're on page one, Norm.
Can't imagine. This, this all began five or six years ago with a few complaints from people that were not necessarily neighbors on 6A, but were in the neighborhood. Some were non-resident property owners, some were residents. But the basic issues were, were very straightforward. They were not anywhere near as complex as what the Cape Cod Commission has put together. The basic issues is that the road, the road was not being maintained properly. I'm talking about the road surface. There were big drop-offs and there still are. Just go by a couple of the restaurants and, and that are in the area and you'll see, you can drop down a foot into a puddle and whatever. And, you know, they, they, those seem to be ignored continually. Those kinds of maintenance issues have existed in that entire stretch with, once you get off the pavement, the dirt that existed or the lawn that existed was driven over continually until there were big ruts.
Right.
That's still the same thing going on.
Right.
Six years later. And, and one or two Cape Cod Commission studies and, and meeting after meeting. So basic maintenance issues have been ignored. And the state's answer to some of these improvements is to throw down this gray material that is very unsightly. And they didn't bother putting in lawn strips where there were lawn strips before, they just threw down this gray material, whatever the heck that is. And that's gotten driven over and eroded. And so, and there were, and there still are multiple areas where there are drains that are poorly maintained. And so, and there were, and there still are multiple areas where there are drains that are poorly maintained, where there's ditches and bumps around the drains. And I think they're a hazard to cars as well as to people. There's parking allowed. There's a lack of, of police intervention to enforce parking laws. Whether it's state police or town police, I don't know. But that was a consistent issue that cars were parking on sidewalks. So that, and I nearly hit somebody crossing the road two years ago who, who, who jutted out from in back of a car that was illegally parked. And it's going to happen. I mean, we, we're going to have situations, Union Street, that, that intersection is very difficult. The corner at Willow is Suicide Alley. And, you know, I'm, I'm amazed that there are not more serious accidents there because people come tearing around the corner. You can't see them, it's from, from here to the end of the room is your sight line coming out of Willow Street. But for, for about a year, there was a stone monument that's about where the Bank of America building was, that was laying on the ground. The state did nothing about it. Finally, after about six months, they, they put it back up. I mean, you know, it just goes on and on in terms of the, the lack of maintenance of what is a very historic area. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that we've got very pretty drawings and, and all this sort of thing from the Cape Cod Commission. But to propose that we're going to put lawn in along that road and expect that the landscapers and the, the other people that service those homes, UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, the mail delivery, are not going to drive over the lawn and destroy what's been put in within a month is, is unrealistic. You know, and so, you know, I wish we'd get back to basics and find a way to get things maintained properly. And it's as basic as the sidewalks all along that section. For a couple of years, as I recall, when I was first on the select board, they weren't plowed. Now they're plowed at town expense.
Correct.
I don't know whether the state's responsible for that or not. But we're doing it for safety reasons, if nothing else. And so we're already absorbing some costs that I think should be the state's. So very frustrated with the, the fact that this has been drawn out and that it's been made very, very complex. You know, if something can be done in connection with our water project that makes, makes sense and improves the long-term maintenance of, of the road and of the drainage of the roads, and that avoids the constant issues with people parking on sidewalks and creating dangerous situations. I mean, I don't know how many times in the meetings the, the police, lack of police intervention has been brought up. Still doesn't happen. And so, you know, can people continue to take advantage of the parking in that area? So I don't know. I, you know, I'm frustrated with the pace of, of work. And I recognize there's been a lot of hard work done and meetings with the community and so forth, and those were important to do. But, you know, if, if we could make progress on some of the basic issues of maintenance and safety and enforcement of parking regulations, it would go a long way toward avoiding other problems.
Mark.
Thank you. Forgive me if you've already answered this question, but, because you, because you may very well have. But the design concepts, are the comments that I'm looking at here in the back section, are they comments based on the design concepts that were presented to the public?
Correct, in the PowerPoint presentation.
And have you sort of vetted these comments?
Yes, we vetted them.
And revised the concepts based on the public comments?
Not yet. What we're trying to do is get some input from the Board of Selectmen before we go back to VHB and say, this is kind of what the community was looking for.
So what you want to basically be able to do is to bring back revisions based on the public input and then invite some more public commentary on those proposed changes?
Correct.
We all know you'll get a lot of public comments.
VHB was planning on taking the comments that we received here, developing them into 10% concept plans, and then having another round of three series of public meetings to garner input.
So what'll happen is after that meeting, you'll have a much better sense of what the public will be comfortable with with respect to these recommendations. You must have a higher degree of confidence.
Correct, but we're hoping to get your input as to where, I mean, like I said, there's a wide range. I think what Norm was talking about, maybe there's some of the, the more simpler answers to some of the, of the functional and safety issues versus some of the more complex ones. And I think maybe it's more of a case of tidying up the edges of Route 28, which are getting a little frayed from lack of maintenance. But if you really want to keep people off the sidewalks, you have to come up with a way of maybe physically preventing them from doing so. And if you want to keep people, like on the south side, that, there's been so much paving that's gone over the curbing that it's basically the sidewalk and the roadway are at the same elevation. People don't really know where to go and they park on the sidewalk. It's one of the comments that we got during that. So are there some physical improvements we can make that will help the, the functional issue of people parking on the sidewalks? And that's some of the things that we can discuss maybe as we go along.
Well, for me, my priority is clearly public safety. I mean, that, to me, of all of the suggestions in terms of changes, I think what has to be at the top of the list is public safety, preventing accidents. I recognize some of the suggestions may not, may not be aesthetically the best, but I think it's worth getting some public input from, from the residents. I mean, as I could tell, I mean, the, at the First Congregational Church, that was the meeting that I attended. The place was packed and no one was shy about offering opinions. They were all, it was a very spirited dialogue and conversation. I thought, and I think, I think, and based on the comments that I heard, I thought they were very articulate, very thoughtful. Some very blunt, some very direct, but, and then the other question I have. So I, I would recommend, as these are winnowed down, we look at those, because that's what I heard at the discussion, to be focused principally on public safety. That's what I picked up from the, the commentary that I heard from residents in Yarmouth Port. The other thing gets to the cost, and then there's the separate issue of who's going to fund it. Now, if we were to do everything that was sort of laid out and proposed here, what's the budget range we're talking about? Where, where could that be, Jeff? You must have some idea.
Oh, it would easily be in the millions if we look at this whole stretch. It's these tip projects.
Four millions, five millions? Are we in the 10 million?
It's not the 10 millions, it's probably the four to five. I mean, it, in the absence of those intersection improvements, I would say. I want to look at the corridor improvements. We approached this initially not really focusing on those, looking at more the corridor between the intersections. But as soon as you talk about an intersection project, you're looking at a million or two just for the intersection. That's kind of the magnitude these days, yeah.
Right. Because I do think it would be help, I'm a little, one of the things I'm worried about is, is, is not going forward. But the worst thing to do in a community is to have a big project present, put in front of people and then disappear and not show up again. I think we owe it to the residents there to bring them something. I think you've got their attention now. I don't think, you're going to have trouble packing the next room, whether it's at the senior center or at the, the First Congregational Church. People will show up and they will participate. I'm interested in clearly hearing what they, what they might have to say about some of the proposals. But I think we also need to present to them an idea of what financially this may cost. And the reality is, we don't know where the money's going to come from. And I think we need to be open to the fact that this is all subject to appropriation. And at the moment, we haven't identified a funding source. Have we at least have some funding sources in mind? Any thoughts, anything, I mean?
It depends on what it is. If it's a maintenance issue, then that might be something that MassDOT pays for. Or it might be something like
Yeah, related to the water project, maybe some of that could be there. Or if there's a full-blown project, it is, can go through that tip process. But again, I think what we heard from people is that's too long. That's a five-year period, and we're just starting that and, you know.
I, I would agree. I think if, if what, much of what we're talking about has to be considered as part of the tip process, I mean, we'll all be gone by the time, I mean, really. I mean, that's a long process. A project like this really
Not me.
Tracy will be here to keep fighting. But, no, the reality is, is that that's a very, very lengthy project.
I'm going to call it the Holcomb Sidewalk. Just so you know, in your memory.
There you go.
Memorial.
Yeah, I think, I think
Like the Green Mile.
Where do I sign? I would, I would maybe code some of the improvements that are likely to be done as part of a water improvement project. So when we're looking at them, we say, okay, this could probably, this is a phase of this. This is some of the, you know, let's identify public safety at the top. Okay, what are those improvements that could potentially be funded once we replace the water mains in that area? All right? Because we're going to have to do that. And then getting back to what we were talking about previously, it could be that some of those water reconstruction funds or water main improvement funds could be used to underwrite some of the cost of this work.
Right.
So, I, I too am somewhat pessimistic about Massachusetts, the state stepping up, even through the tip process or any other process. But there may be, you know, public safety from time to time. The federal highway, other agencies will come up with specific buckets of money targeted to public safety improvements. We've seen that with roadway improvements and schools. You know, I'm not aware of any upcoming grant rounds that deal with this, but I do think we need to investigate that further. What I don't want to do is, is end up with a project that's like a $20 million project. And then we're all, now No, that's the, that's the thing that I'm worried about is it could, you know, when you add it all up.
I, I don't think what we're, we're talking about here is anywhere near that level of project.
Well, I think we need to be in a realm of something reasonable. It's got to be, you know, five million or under, you know? And I think we just need, we're going to need to work extra hard. I mean, to the extent that there are aesthetic things that are being done under historic preservation, I don't know if we've done that kind of work with Community Preservation Act money.
I think things like gateway signage and that type of thing might be able to be done through CTA.
I would investigate that since we're now debating the future of CVC.
Can we do this before we dip?
There you go. Yeah, an added sense of urgency for us to deal with that issue. But those are my thoughts. I think the worst thing to do is to allow this to languish. I think we need to get back in front of people, get the tomatoes thrown, you know, and hear the conversation. I mean, we all know that's part of the process. But we got to do it and get in front of people and say, okay, we heard you, at least we think we heard you now. This is what we've come up with to respond to that commentary. Some of the things you're going to like, some of the things you're not going to like. So tell us now what you like, what you don't like, and what you might be even willing to help underwrite.
Half the people will like it and half the people will dislike it.
So I think
And nobody will want to.
I think for people at home, there's seven pages of comments here.
Yes.
So reading through it, a lot of them are similar. It would be nice to kind of digest this into a, like Mark said, kind of just the points. Public safety would be first and potentially what, what short-term, maybe a short-term goal and a long-term goal. So maybe it's something that we can work on. From, from what I remember, you know, it's similar to, like I started to say about the newspaper article in Barnstable. The way to fix this, you know, to Norm's point about the state putting grass there, why are they going to put grass there when people are parking on it? It's a waste of money. The only way you're going to stop that is to put granite curbing and upgrade the entire streetscape.
Or in some areas, you, I actually see brick in those areas where you might want to have grass. Am I, am I missing something?
That was one of the concepts that was discussed.
It was an option, yeah.
Yeah. There may be other materials that could be used.
Well, brick might be a thing because one of the things that I heard consistently at the meeting I was at was a lot of the businesses were concerned about the reduction in parking. Because as soon as you put granite curbing up, they lose parking spaces. So is there any other potential for, you know, where, where those, how you can work with the businesses? If we did something to make sure that they, you know, retained some of their parking in other areas? So if, if you could do that through paving or pavers, whatever, still make it better. You get rid of the ruts and, and they keep the paving, I mean, and they keep the parking. But I'm, I'm not sure what the law is either in, in relation to enforcement. I think for many, I think it would be hard for the police to enforce at this point in time because, you know, there's a stretch down there of parking where people have been parking for many, many years.
Seems to me that, that we could find a way to get the businesses to cooperate. I mean, there's, there's only two or three businesses that generate the traffic
Correct.
that could otherwise use parking in back of the buildings. It's, it's existing parking areas that are not utilized fully. And get those businesses to deal with it. And it's not, it's not every day of the week. It's on certain days of the week or on weekends. And why can't those businesses cooperate?
I think one of the problems with that, Norm, is, you know, we're kind of our own worst enemy. A signage would help.
That's one of the recommendations.
Probably don't have the space or the room up front for the signage to let people know that there's parking out back. So perhaps we need to look at our, our sign code and allow something that's appropriate so that they can better advertise that the parking is there.
If I can just add to what Tracy's saying, because I think she's on a good point. I mean, this is all part of a dialogue. What's going to come out of this will be criticisms, there'll be concerns. I think rather than reject them, I think everyone needs to know what the options are in terms of how best to address them. Like Norm said, there may be other parking avenues available. But that might require maybe code changes or a zoning change. That might require some other, particularly if there's, I, I think it's important for people that are involved in this dialogue to hear where there are maybe potential issues. So that if there are changes or things that need to be done or accommodations that need to be made, people needs to, need to know it's part of an overall plan. That's the reason, that's the reason why I think the opportunities for success here are high because you've got so many people at the table. There's nothing worse than working on a planning project and people don't show. You've got everybody at the table, you've got shop owners there, you've got other people participating. I think to help find ways or strategies to reconcile areas where there may be inherent conflicts, I think opportunities will be high. So the, the challenge is going to be identify in those areas where you may be proposing something where someone may have an issue. To come into this and get 100% consensus is going to be difficult. It's going to be finding areas where you can come to some common ground and some, and then identifying the ones where everyone's in agreement. So I think when you're done with this plan, I'd be looking for, okay, what is, what are the, where's the low-hanging fruit? Where's the most inexpensive stuff that we can take on that deals with public safety and, and where there's consensus for it? And then there're going to be other things that will take some time and maybe more focused dialogue in that particular portion of the Route 6A area. But again, I, my feeling is the worst thing to do is to let this, to keep staying on it and sustaining the momentum and the dialogue and the discussion and not lose the attention. And I would use, going back to Tracy's point, getting this stuff on our website.
It's on, it's on the town website. Yep, all of this information from the town website.
Is it, is it easy to find? Do I need my decoder ring to go get it?
You might. I can also do a news item again.
Yeah, and more links, and do that periodically and refresh it and keep doing it on a regular basis. We know sometimes it takes, we've had this conversation before, multiple hits before people catch on to something. But I think that would be good.
I guess, I had a question. I mean, I think that that's kind of what we tried to do with some of the discussion topics, of taking the, all the diverse comments that we got and try to identify things that might be done to, to address them. It sounds like maybe what you're talking about is categorizing it a little bit differently of being public safety of being public safety and what can be done as part of the water main project, but like things like the parking in the back. One of the recommendations is coming up, working with Oaklands Highway and the Historical Commission to come up with a standard sign. Right now, some businesses have signs that say parking in the rear. They're not very prominent, but if it was like a standard symbol that was more historic in nature, that directed, and you had it at the bakery, and you had it at Inaho, and you had it at-
Well, it's funny you bring those two up, because reading this, one of the things I'd encourage is the businesses to work with each other. Because if you look at some of the ones that have the issues, or, you know, the bakery or Inaho, their timing for their, for their busy times are completely different. So if they could work together and utilize each other's space, perhaps they could resolve a lot of the issues on their own.
What we're finding isn't that there's not insufficient parking behind the businesses, it's that people aren't using it.
Right.
In Inaho, the driveway's very narrow. It's only nine foot wide. There's been some discussion of trying to widen that with the adjacent property owner and make it easier two-way in and out. So there is, I agree with you, there needs to be some, some coordination and some communication with the, with the business owners. But I think the actual problems were fairly well-identified at the initials. Now it's like, what are some of the options from the simple to more complex? It sounds like Norm's looking for a little bit more simple. I think those options are particularly here. I think the biggest issue that would drive, being a larger, more involved project, would be trying to make the sidewalks handicap accessible. Trying to go from the little three-foot wide that you have, mostly on the north side, to a five-foot wide, when people aren't interested in having curbing. I think we pretty much clearly heard that. There's concerns with ambulances and public safety vehicles being able to get through there if there was too much curbing, preventing people from pulling over when they needed to get by. The aesthetics of it, the looks of it, was not a lot of interest in it. When we, we had suggested a small section of sidewalk on the south side from Summer Street to the post office, which has a beaten path to it, I, there were, people were not interested in that. They didn't want it, there was a tree that was gonna be impacted. There was a lot of negativity associated with that. So if we start getting away from that, I think you're getting into smaller projects. Maybe you're talking about doing the crosswalks, getting those with the more prominent type of crossing so that people can see it. Right now, the crosswalks, I don't know if you wanted to go through the rest of the presentation, but the crosswalks, they don't go to the actual, you can see it.
They don't go anywhere.
They don't go anywhere. They don't even connect to the, to the sidewalk that's right there.
We have roads to nowhere and crosswalks to nowhere.
Exactly. So addressing our crosswalk issues would go a long way for public safety. And also, right here, you have, I think we're all familiar with that ramp by Church Street. To try and fix that, you're gonna be taking out a bunch of beautiful heirloom trees on the adjacent person's property. We don't wanna do that. But once you touch it and you start making improvements, you're gonna have to bring it up to code. So I think some of the conversations that we're talking about, looking here, is, you know, let's just try and get MassDOT to do a little maintenance work on there, doing the piano keys, looking at a couple locations where we might have better places to put crosswalks on 6A, if there's something on the other side of the street that people are regularly wanting to get to. And then maybe wanna add crosswalks on those side roads so that people know that you can get there. These are, this, this recommendation here is fairly innocuous. I mean, I don't think it's an extensive project, pretty straightforward, and it's also something that would really help pedestrian safety.
But getting MassDOT to do any of this is like pulling teeth.
Can we put together a letter for our state reps and senators that-
We can certainly do that.
I know that they had been at some of your meetings, but I think it's important that we ask them for their help.
Tim Whelan I know has been at, at least one of the meetings. How about a bid? I mean, we talked about bids with, a bid with respect to wastewater. I think it might be an option to put on the table with respect to this work, is the idea of a business improvement district on the north side, conceivably. I just put, I'm not proposing it, I'm suggesting it, is that in, I mean, Yarmouth Port, particularly in this village area, you know, might be considered-
Small.
A small enough and amenable for the working of a BID, you know? So as a potential funding option. I would at least look at that if it's potentially eligible. I wouldn't necessarily propose it, but I would be doing some detective work on it to see if it might fit as a potential funding avenue for this. If there's a lot of enthusiasm and support for it, if they see that it's going to be genuinely helpful both to residents and businesses and improve the overall safety and character of the area, I think, again, you know-
Well, I know they did that downtown Barnstable. They got beautiful lighting-
Yeah.
-which I thought was very historic.
I think that was a bid as well, wasn't it?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Karen, do you-
Hyannis has the bid.
Hyannis has the bid, but-
That's what I meant, downtown Hyannis.
Right.
Which is pretty large. There's not, there's not a significant number of businesses in the Village Center. I don't know how much they could support making some improvements. The crosswalks, I think that Mark, Jeff and I were talking, that would be probably something we could try and really push MassDOT to do as part of their maintenance. This is a safety issue and they might be able to do something like that.
Good luck.
Well, I think doing a whole-
Good luck.
Business improvement district is a heavy lift as well. So it's how you wanna put your resources to.
Well, if we're interested in truly funding it, we need to be realistic in funding it. To be thinking that MassDOT is gonna step up and play an active role in this thing is a pipe dream, as far as I'm concerned. And I don't think we should mislead people. I think we can at least promise them that we'll go to bat for them, we'll fight for it, we'll do it. But the reality is, is that, look at all the other roads and areas that they're not taking care of.
Right.
I mean, we've got complaints in town for all the other areas that they're not taking care of. To add a new one on to this is just totally unrealistic. I like the idea of being, trying to be creative and look at a multitude of funding sources. If there is a handicapped accessibility-oriented improvement that makes sense, that's not an inconvenience, I mean, there may be CDBG funds or other funds focused on public access that might be worth looking at as well. So those are my thoughts. I appreciate putting coordinating with MassDOT, but I think that's unrealistic to expect them to do much more.
Anything.
Yeah, or anything at all.
So, I think some of the other things that we've been talking about was the Village Center on the south side that has the parking here. Some of the issues are, people are parking, as I mentioned, on the sidewalk, because the, the beautiful, there's actually beautiful granite, anti-granite curbing there that's just been covered. So maybe, and then one of the other issues here is, is in Minden Lane. This is where the pediatric office is, and this is where Happy Fish Bakery is. You can see this is a whole wide expanse with no real definition to it. So that was an issue with regard to people crossing in the road, and some of the-
I think Happy Fish has changed that. And now they planted a big tree in front.
Yep.
They've got a stone wall in there.
They do, they did a beautiful patio out front.
Right.
Yep. The main issue here is Minden Lane, which is in front of Barfield's, Minden Lane, and then this is the pediatric office, not-
Can you, can you just hold that thought? I think Norm makes a very interesting point, I'd like to comment on it. Are there things that we're recommending that individual property owners can do themselves?
I think the improvement that they did was on their property.
They're providing more definition by putting a tree in there and doing some other things.
Yeah, potentially. I think coming up with an overall plan that we can work with abutters to implement is a possibility.
Am I crazy, Norm? Is that-
No, I think it's a good suggestion. Very frankly, that's, one of the frustrations with the property along Route 6A is that property owners could go out and throw some, some stones down in these, in these holes so that cars aren't constantly hitting them. You know, there are some basic things that should be done that would help on a short-term basis, and, you know, we need that, and I talked before about the businesses trying to reduce the amount of illegal parking, but, you know, I think that that's in the same, same direction.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, maybe there's some funding sources that would help those businesses invest as well. But, you know, I think it's a very valid point. It's not just businesses. There are private property owners, homeowners that allow the front sections between, sometimes there're fences and the roadway, but it is just no maintenance whatsoever. And then maybe once every few years they'll do something, and, but it's not continually maintained. And, you know, I think there's, there's a, a need for a sense of community pride to get the residents and the businesses to, to address some of those issues.
Is there any pot of money that we could tap into where maybe, for those that were, a homeowner has an interest or a business owner has an interest, maybe a matching grant they could apply for? I know we do tourism promotion grants, right? We have, and that involves, you know, a, you know, a project proponent actually spending their own money, but then leveraging town money. Maybe this is an area where potentially you could have a matching grants program. If you wanna do a little project that's in your, in your, on your property to improve access and public safety, and it's spelled out in this master plan, bingo, apply for a matching grant. Or maybe there's a way to write it off. I don't know. I'm just think, I'm just trying to think, because I think it gets back to the, Norm's point about finding ways to stimulate community involvement and taking advantage of the interest that's already there.
Let's just kinda outline some of the, of the public comments. Obviously, everyone wants to keep the village corridor, improve pedestrian safety, and address all the parking on the sidewalks, and encourage people to use the parking in the rear. And the issue that I discussed with regard to the parking in the front and the Minden Lane area, and then really making the Village Center look a little bit more attractive from some of the conversations that we had, but without being too overdone. So some of the simple complex ideas, simple to complex ideas was just leave the on-street parking is undefined. Don't, there's parking on the south side now, leave it alone, let, let people park there. Develop that standard parking in the rear sign with Oaklands Highway and others for the, and posted at the Happy Fish, Jack's Outback in Inaho. Improve the crosswalk at Sandy Side Lane. There were some concerns about the safety there, and maybe we could actually have a little bulb out to identif, to identify that parking on the south side. And that might be another way where we can put some type of gateway element, or something there to kinda let people know, okay, you're hitting the Village Center here, and hopefully that will help people also slow down. There's also discussion of installing a new crosswalk at Happy Fish Bakery, because there is a lot of people that go back and forth that walk there, because most of the parking, or the sidewalk is on, on the north side of the roadway. And then the other one had to do with sidewalk improvements. This isn't an overly large project. These are just reconstructing the sidewalks that are already there on the south side by bringing back that antique granite curbing that's been buried and redefining the sidewalk, and also doing something at Minden Lane. There was a lot of discussions here about needing to be sure that there was, it was mountable, so there's different ideas that we could do that might make this an obvious pedestrian corridor that would be a little bit safer for people. Simply with changing the material, maybe you have a little concrete walkway that goes there. Not a super expensive project, but it would be tidying up the edges of the roadway and making it a little bit more defined, and maybe making it look a little fresher so that people know that they've come into the Village Center. And we had talked a little bit about decorative lighting. That might be something to further vet to see whether people are interested. If you're gonna be doing the sidewalks, maybe it makes sense to put a little decorative lighting in. Or maybe people feel that's too much, or it's too expensive, and that's something that we could certainly vet further. So that's really the ideas that were looked at for the village on the south side. On the north side, this is exactly what Norm had been talking about with regard to lots of people parking here on the side of the road. MassDOT came in and put the little curb in and kinda left an attractive area on the backside, so people continue to park there. There are mail trucks, as well as different landscaping people that often park there that makes it a little bit difficult to maintain that grass strip. There's also a limited right-of-way and a lot of curb cuts on that side of the roadway that would impact the ability to actually have a bona fide parking space on the north side. So again, the public comments had to do with not overdoing things in the Village Center, but there wasn't a lot of discussion specifically with regard to the parking on the north side. So the answers here are relatively simplistic. Either restore the grass areas, install no parking signs, I think there's some there now, and increase police enforcement and coordinate with the abutters, or working with them to try and get them to maintain the grass strips. Or installing some type of antique stone curbing and restoring the grass, that's, the curbing will physically prevent people from accessing that area, and then coordinating with the abutters to address the grass strips. So that would be just cleaning up the north side of the village, like we were talking about cleaning up the south side of the village. Not an extensive project. The north side is really the, the side where I think most of the water main work's gonna go, Jeff.
That's likely the side, right.
So I think something like this could easily be incorporated into the water main project. The sidewalk on the south would probably be some type of an additional project. We do sidewalk projects around town all the time. They're not extensive, as long as you can stay within the right-of-way, there's no acquisition required.
What triggers the handicap upgrade, though?
When you're doing work on the sidewalk, would you make sure it would be ADA accessible? Yes.
I think in that particular location, you'd be able to do it, versus like that ramp area with the grade changes at Church Street. It's certainly something that we would, we could look into more. Summer Street, there was a lot of discussion about reconfiguring Summer Street and making it narrower and a more defined entrance further to the west, taking the, the water pump there and moving it over here and creating a little park area. Not well-received. So basically, the improvements that we're recommending was being very rudimentary, providing some type of dashed line here, along here. I think there's some sections in Dennis where you see it, where they have a dashed fog line. So in the, in the nighttime, it helps you to stay in the right, correct place in your travel lane. And then there are people who are coming across here, and like, this is where that path is that gets you to the, to the post office. So even if we're not doing this, we wanna make sure that people can still get across there. This is very wide, so maybe we wanna have a more defined crosswalk further back.
There was just another accident in that very spot last week.
This is actually an extremely high crash intersection, and I think that's why VHB was trying to look at different ways of geometrically reconfiguring it in order to address that. There wasn't a lot of support for that at, at the meetings.
I agree.
The Common, this is another situation where a lot of people park around, I'm sorry, Jeff, park around the Common, and then they come here, there's no sidewalks at all, and then they come again to a crosswalk that has nothing that connects you to the sidewalk that gets you to the new church. So this would be a case of, we had talked about maybe having sidewalk on this side, as well as making that a new crosswalk that connects, but I think there's really little interest to do the sidewalk on the south side. So there really is just a matter of redoing, this is a different location, just so you know, of doing the crosswalk, but then having like the little landing pads on, on either side at the Common. The Village Store, I don't know if anyone's been out there, but there's a lot of functional issues there. It's a large expanse of pavement. The sidewalk's actually lower than the roadway, so a lot of runoff is going there. Drainage structures are not in the correct location to catch any of that runoff. There wasn't a lot of, there wasn't actually no specific comments with regard to this at the public meetings, although the owner did attend the first public meeting. So to do anything here to help define the entrances, we'd have to have further discussions with the property owner, and it might involve narrowing up and defining the entrances, and then also rebuilding this sidewalk so you actually have a safe cross, crossing along that large area in the front. And then drainage, I think this is something that's a functional issue that we can probably incorporate a lot in with the water main project. There's some areas where they're simply not in the right location, they're not along the curbing. There's been some ponding issues that we could address as well, as also with road runoff going onto private property, which is, has been an issue. There's also limited right-of-way there, so if you have the sidewalk lower than the roadway, one of the only ways you can really address that might be with some type of limited vertical curbing. So that might be some areas where we would have to vet and discuss with people where that vertical curbing could go. The only other option, one of the things that was discussed at the meetings and fairly favorably, was having a rolled, a modified Cape Copper, which you see right now, and then having a three-foot green strip, and then having the sidewalk. We don't have the right-of-way on Route 6A to do that. Certainly not on both sides, but a lot of times actually on the north side. So that's why we're talking about the potential options of having the limited areas of the curbing. I would suggest trying to, and you can purchase antique-style granite curbing, which I think would be more in, in kind with the historic nature of the area. And then this is just another issue that kinda got brought up, a lot of the reasons-
Kathy, can you just go back to that last line?
Sure, I'm sorry. Sure, I'm sorry.
On the drainage, Jeff, do we have any drainage issues that fit within our current plans for upgrading drainage? You know, if any of them, anything fit with the MS4 or some of the other flooding initiatives?
Yeah, well, because this is a state road, they have their own permit-
Oh, really?
... requirement for a state highway, yeah. So they have issues they need to address to water quality, to the water quality point. They definitely need to make some improvements along this portion as well as Route 28 and Route 6 as well, but that would be under their permit, not necessarily ours.
Okay.
So this is just an idea, concept of they've been overlaying, overlaying without grinding, and it's been changing the drainage patterns and also covering up the curbing. So just really not something that we're going to necessarily get Mass DOT to fix anytime soon, but as they're moving forward with any type of repaving on Route 6A, encouraging them to remove the old overlays before doing that. And then this talks a little bit about the implementation that we had talked about. Obviously, if we're going to move forward, we would need additional input from the village businesses, different historic groups, the Village Store property owner, and also a little bit more input from, directly from the police and fire to give VHB a little bit of guidance on how to come up with some concept plans, which then again would be vetted at another series of meetings. And once we have that, then we can talk a little bit more specifically with regard to how we might be able to break it up into multiple projects and how we might be able to fund it.
Jeff, are the water main improvements along 6A a high priority?
They are. They're our number-one location as far as a long stretch of water main to replace. There's a pretty significant break history we've had there. We do have a list that'll be reflected in the master, the Water Master Plan update of some other smaller sections, but as far as a large stretch, this is the number one.
Got it. So, because I know Eric has brought this up before about looking at a capital plan for water. Obviously, to me, in looking at a capital plan, these may just become more elevated in terms of a sense of urgency and getting going on some of this stuff.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate all your hard work on this and coming in to solicit the input of the board. It's much appreciated.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
Committee handbook is the next matter.
Yes, in your package should be the latest and hopefully final version of the handbook. It's been tabulated, it has a table of contents. We've made some reductions on it, made the English read a little bit easier to some extent. We, staff believes that we got to the point where it serves as a useful resource for our boards and committee members, and we would like to see that get approved.
I make a motion, we approve the committee handbook as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve any further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Boarding committee actions, do you have any appointments, Mark?
Yeah, I have a few items for the board. One is to reappoint Richard Carroll as the Town of Yarmouth's representative to the Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council. This is an appointment for a three-year term running through January 2023. Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries, thank you. The next item deals with the Town of Yarmouth's representative to the Cape Cod Veterans Services Board. I'm recommending that we reappoint Mr. Robert Lawton as our representative for a three-year term running through December 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is to reappoint Mr. Robert Lawton as the Town of Yarmouth's representative to the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority. This is an appointment that would be running for a three-year term through December 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next item is an appointment of Paula Morrison to serve as an alternate on the Town of Yarmouth's Old Kings Highway Committee.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
I just wonder how often they call upon the alternates, because I know she's only a part-time resident, and we've, we've kind of tried not to appoint people who are not full-time residents.
Yeah, it's-
I know it's only an alternate, but I don't know if they call upon them often in this position.
I mean, I can certainly check on that. They don't, I usually on these kinds of appointments like to coordinate the discussion with also with the staff of the committee. So in this case, the committee staff is involved in that discussion in terms of their involvement and their engagement. I've looked at, closely at her resume and her background, she has an incredibly impressive resume, and she's going to be spending more time in Yarmouth over time, so it's sort of like when you see people this talented, if you can rope them in early.
Absolutely. I just think we need to pay attention if they're-
No, I understand. I understand. So what I do is I vet these through the committee staff, and if they have an issue or a question or concern, they can certainly let me know. So in any event, that's the recommendation, it's just for a one-year appointment?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. The next committee are reappointments to the Old Kings Highway Committee, Richard Gegenworth and Don Marie Flett. So the first one is to reappoint Richard Gegenworth to the architect regular position on the Town of Yarmouth's Old King Highway Committee. This appointment is for a one-year term running through December 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you. And the final one here is to reappoint Don Marie Flett to the alternate position on the Town of Yarmouth's Old Kings Highway Committee for a one-year term running through December 2020.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is it. Mr. Chairman, for my report.
Thank you, Mark. We have minutes of July 30, 2019 to have approved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously. Upcoming agenda review is next. So our last meeting this year is the 17th. Next Tuesday, we have a water department update, a town administrator's fiscal year '21 budget presentation, and 2020 ATM articles for review. Anybody have anything else they would like to have considered for that date or put on as placeholders for another time that we have a lighter agenda?
I have a question regarding the water department update. Dan, can you give us, shed some light on how thorough this review?
So there has been some decision-making that needs to be done at the water department relative to the future. So one of the proposals that Mr. Colby plans to talk about is requesting permission to, when the term is up for the general manager from Weston and Sampson, that we retain a, go on a job search and retain a water wastewater superintendent. Well, that superintendent's position's been vacant now for over a year. We hired Weston and Sampson to provide a general manager. We're now at the point where Jeff's got recommendations for the future for the department, and one of those recommendations is to hire that position to begin the progress of rebuilding the water department. And the other issues would be some issues that might have come up along the way in the DPW world related to water, some of the latest issues with water, and he can probably also give you, we're going to probably put a little bit of an update on the Cape Cod Energy Park, because there's some timely action that's, you should be updated on that as well.
On the water, I'd like to ask if we could get at least an update on the, I know there was some water contamination sampling and some monitoring-
Yeah.
-that was being done regarding a plume that was potentially migrating to an area of concern. So I'd be interested in an update on that situation. I'm not going to ask for that night that we get an update, going back to Eric's point about an overall water plan and capital plan, but I do think we need to find a place to put it on here.
I think, well, I don't want to speak for Jeff. I think you'll see some significant progress in a lot of areas. I know the study that he was waiting for, the master plan, is close to being finalized from the consultant, so once we get that, we'll be able to move forward on that.
All right. If he can update us on that, that'll be great.
Does that include the rate study?
Well, the rate study would be, would become the next step in this process, that's correct. Understanding what we got to build out in the rate structure that needs to support that.
Great.
If there's certainly something you want to touch upon specifically, just send me an email, and I'll get it to him.
Excellent. I think you got it.
Does anybody else have any input on the December 17th agenda? Okay, she and none, we'll go to the next slide.
I just have one question. I see that January 7th, we have a DHY discussion. Have we embarked on the study, the financial study of DHY?
There's some late-minute information that we're working through. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure we have that before we're, when to make a decision, because I'd like to-
So the path we're going to do to execute that was working with through the Town of Harwich. They've had some changeover in their operation over there, just kind of slowed it down a little bit. I do have communication out to Harwich staff about their latest status of that, and depending on what I hear back from them or not, I had a suggestion about Yarmouth executing an agreement to get this work going so we can get it done in time for our decision-making process.
Okay, good.
So in one form or fashion, that'll happen. We, hasn't started yet, and so we are, you know, behind the eight ball more than what we were already. So that is a concern of, are we going to be able to get this done in timeline we had hoped to have it done?
Does it appear that, and I know we haven't got an update, but does it appear that, I'm assuming we're doing the discussion in January because the potential would be for a town meeting. Does it appear that the other two towns are still on that same timeline?
Yeah, we have a meeting again with the other two towns next Friday, but the plan, I mean, there's some last-minute issues we've got to work out with the agreement. We want to share some of that language that we've discussed internally with you all on the 7th, and legal counsel's looking at some of it as well. Some of it would require to change it, buy-in from our partners. So there's a little bit more work to be done on that, but as far as I know, everybody's still on board with at least at minimum having the agreement language on their town meeting for the spring.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the agenda? Okay, individual items. Norm, do you have any individual items?
I'm all set.
Mark?
All set, thanks.
Tracy?
All set.
Eric?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Town administrator items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on the consent agenda tonight is a number of donations, and also the last item is the annual license renewals. And the report from Linda Hill, she had indicated that everybody renewed, so they met the deadline, and that was, so I'd ask for a vote for that.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It passes unanimously.
The next item on, we've taken in a fair amount of feedback on the Ocean Club license situation, so, as recently as last night, as a matter of fact. So I think what we're going to do is, at this point, so late in the year, there's no real pressing issue legally to do the license agreement, so we figured we'd put our attention and effort based on the direction we got from the board, which was to work on a longer-term solution based on the inputs we got to look at what we can get with the Ocean Club as it relates to fair and equitable return for what would look like to be some land use on their end. And we had given some, we had gotten some good suggestions yesterday that we have to follow up with. So we'll engage the club on negotiations over the next couple of months and see where that goes to hopefully have some kind of article for town meeting that addresses this issue in the desire line that the board had for the long term for both parties. So, next item I have was a communication received to me from the school administration coming from MSBA. I'm going to pass out a document, a little bit hard to read, but this, this is the, I apologize for that.
Not surprised.
But it's the debt schedule as presented to the town recently on the Matta Key School building project. So the short of the situation is MSBA is getting ready to authorize the district to begin the process of starting again with the project. Apparently, we're through the appeal period, there wasn't any action taken that I've been aware of, so I would anticipate in the coming days, we'll get official authorization. So what MSBA wanted to make sure that the board of select manu was what the budgetary impacts looked like on the project as we go forward. So on the table, if you go all the way to your right, you'll see that the debt service incurred to date, our share of that for this, for this fiscal year that we're in now is $8,000 roughly.
Eight?
Yeah.
Eight thousand.
Proposed in our budget for next year is a sum of $52,000 to cover next year's short-term interest. What happens typically on these big projects, there'll be a two-tier bond offering that'll occur, and they're proposing it, one at $60 million and one at $12 million. So what they wanted to make sure that you appreciated was the fact that, I think as it looks like in 2022, the impact as it's projected presently right now is $2.684 million. So what they were asking us to do was, could the board affirm their understanding of this obligation due on that timeframe? And they're looking specifically from a vote of the board to decide the next election cycle for the debt exclusion vote. And as soon as we would have that vote, that I could transmit that to MSBA, and they would have a certain level of comfort that we're fully aware of our obligation and we have a plan forward to present it to the taxpayers.
I would say we put this on the next ballot, right? Which would be May?
I agree.
May?
Yeah, so May, the town election in May is the next possible time to do this, that's correct. Although, you know, I take that back, there is a state primary in 2020 in March, but I would say that the town election in May is probably the more appropriate time.
Is the November election too late?
Well, you know, so that's an interesting question. I don't think that it's too late, but I think it does drive a certain scenario where it gives, we miss an opportunity where there's a fair number of town folks that'll be in town in May, and then the turnout in November is enormous, and that's a big battle, a big hurdle to get to anyways. That ballot will be large anyways due to the presidential election and whatnot, so.
Well, this ballot alone in May, depending upon the vote at town meeting, we could be having the CPA?
Yeah, so we talked about that. So interestingly enough, and we'd have to still work with Phil a little bit on this, the timeline between the town meeting and a decision point in the ballot, because you need a certain amount of time, we just went through this with the last election with the DPW building, for the absentee ballot, we just don't have enough time. So we'd actually have to prepare the ballot question, present it to you well in advance so that it could be printed up and be available. The danger in that is you end up running up a ballot that we don't know necessarily what gets passed at town meeting. So we're hopeful that whatever comes out of our discussions in the next couple of weeks related to the CPA situation that we just discussed tonight, that we could all be in unison on that topic such that if we did decide to draw up a sample ballot, it has the support of town meeting, and we know what, you know, we'd have a better chance that our resources wouldn't be wasted on that at that point. So it gets a little complicated, we have to work on that, but the timeframe is so condensed that we'd have to have language well in advance of the May town election.
Well, we certainly need time to educate the population as to what a no vote means on this, and it could be catastrophic for our town. So putting together for us what that would look like come 2022 without being able to raise and appropriate that funding, I think is an important educational thing we need to find time to do.
Yeah. I mean, the budget numbers as we presently have projected, they're very fresh now, so it's not a bad time to be able to do that.
I think if you, the budget presentation on the 17th will indicate some particular lines and areas of the budget, which you could infer, you know, to be at risk if you didn't have $2.6 million. So that's probably a good starting point.
So would you entertain a motion tonight to put the ballot for the school debt exclusion on the May election cycle so that I could communicate that, or would you rather wait till next week? I don't think any harm's going to happen if we decide to wait a week on that question.
Because we're going to revisit this question next week anyway.
Yeah.
Let's put it on for next week.
Okay.
That way we won't, we won't have any notice issues.
Yep.
Well, I did, it is on the-
Question somewhat related. Do we know if Dennis is going to put, or have we had any conversation with them putting in their town meeting the refund of their portion of the-
The 750?
I haven't had any recent conversations on that topic with them, but I certainly, the next time we go over them-
Well, several of their select board members committed to that.
Understood, yeah.
And, but, you know, I would hate to see it-
They said they'd pay their fair share, nor they just didn't say what it was.
That was the phrase, a fair share. That's right. That's all I have, other than that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Question to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.